Good afternoon. I'd like to call the city council meeting July 18, 2017, to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Mayor Potem Dominguez?
Present.
Mayor Snyder?
Here.
Councilmember Rouse?
Here.
Councilmember Hart?
Here.
And Councilmember Maria?
Here.
Great. Any changes to the agenda? Okay. A public comment. I have a few speaker slips here. In two minutes at the podium, we'll start with Phil Walker and then Jose Arturo Gallegos. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. If you'll excuse me, I was up early for a court date. It all worked out. You know, I saw it one way, and Officer Ragsdale, I highly commend him, saw it another, but the judge sort of saw it in between, and one of the two counts was dropped. So, just got a short traffic school to go to, but it had the fine, which was great. Officer Ragsdale, I highly commend him. You know, I'm pretty sure the police department, the officers work a 12-hour shift. My first five and a half years at El Estero, I worked 12-hour rotating shift, nights to days and back to days and to nights, and it whacks you. It takes a hit on you. And if he's commuting out of town, you're adding another two to three hours probably on top of that. So, something to be concerned about, the cost of housing involved again. Also, one quick thing. Steve Corral was mentioned in the Employee Recognition Awards last Tuesday, and I worked with this gentleman for probably 12 to 15 years, and he is a tremendous asset to the city in the El Estero wastewater treatment plant. He's also a U.S. Marine that served in Somalia. And what I'm seeing today, there are very, very few veterans compared, left in city service compared to when I was hired in 1981. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Arturo Gallegos will be the final public speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members. I've already been to about two, three AUD meetings. They're on, I believe, 630 Garden Street, the Planning Commission building, and I'm not too happy about these AUD programs. It's really not good. I'm on the fixed income. Okay. I cannot afford something like that, let alone if I can't afford it, poor working-class people here in Santa Barbara and regular workers, they can't afford something like that. I think personally, it should stop. It's affecting long residents, you know, people, you know, who were born and raised here, people with physical parking problems. It's just a nightmare. Santa Barbara's starting to lose its old charm. It's not, of course, as time goes on, things change, but, you know, from the time that I was three years old into my, into my early twenties, thirties, it's just gotten worse. So, I, I'm just, you know, speaking against AUD, you know, projects, and I think they should put a halt for the time being. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comment. We have the consent calendar and some items to read.
Item two, adoption of ordinance for speed limit changes. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Chapter 10.60, the Santa Barbara Municipal Code, by revising Section 10.60.015 and establishing prima facie speed limits on certain portions of Carrillo Street, Fairview Avenue, Gutierrez Street, Sammerken Drive, San Pasquale Street, and Santa Barbara Street. Item three, subject adoption of ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Section 10.44.220 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code with respect to restriction of oversized vehicle parking. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Section 10.44.220 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code with respect to restriction of oversized vehicle parking. Item four, adoption of an ordinance to execute a Second Amendment to concession agreement 23445 with first-class concessions. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the airport director to execute a Second Amendment to concession agreement 23445 with first-class concessions. California corporation amending the term and midterm refurbishment provisions to extend the expiration by five years to August 3, 2026, and add a requirement for rebranding of the airline terminal full-service requirement at Santa Barbara Airport, as well as update language required by the Federal Aviation Administration regarding persons with disabilities. Item six, records destruction for waterfront department. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to destruction of records held by the waterfront department. And additionally, item 19, authorization of the city administrator to submit workers' compensation stipulations with request for award to the Workers' Compensation Appeals Board. And item 20, successor agency sale of the Caeza Chavez property and related business items. Recommendation that the successor agency accept the recommendation of the Oversight Board and approve and authorize the executive director to execute an AIR purchase and sales agreement for the Caeza Chavez properties with Marburg Industries for the purchase right, price of $6 million. B, adopt a resolution of the successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Santa Barbara transferring all right, title, and interest to the real property located in the City of Santa Barbara at 123 South Caeza Chavez, 145 South Caeza Chavez, 110 South Carantina, and 114 South Carantina owned by the successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Santa Barbara to Marburg Industries for the purchase price of $6 million, and authorizing the executive director to execute such agreements and related documents as necessary to effectuate such transfer of real property interests. And C, approve a $15,000 increase in the contract for a total contract of $105,000 for legal services with price postal and Parma to the Oversight Board.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. We have speaker requests for items 2, 12, and 17. Are there any other items to be pulled?
Item 11, please.
11? Okay.
Item 3, I'd like to vote on that separately, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Okay. So, we'll just go in numerical order. Item 2 was already read. It's the adoption of ordinance for speed limit changes. We have Eve Sanford, who'd like to speak. And then, is Mark Sapp here? Mark? Yeah, and so you're giving your two minutes? Yep. So, Eve, you have up to four minutes.
Thank you.
There you go.
Good afternoon, city council. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition SB Bike. I'd like to give comment in regards to several of the speed limits that are being raised in this resolution. I do know that they're set via 85th percentile and that it's a challenging methodology that the city and the Public Works Department has to work with, but I think it's important that we consider the impact of raising speed limits on the quality of life for people in Santa Barbara and on the safety of people biking, walking, and driving. This ties, or this relates a lot to the Santa Barbara Vision Zero Resolution that aims to reduce traffic fatalities and deaths to zero, which the city adopted. The chance of being injured on a bicycle or walking increases quite a bit when you raise the speed limit. Even the difference between 20 miles per hour and 30 miles per hour more than doubles your chance of dying when you're hit by a car. Specifically, Lost Pacitas Road is now going to be 55 miles per hour. So, you think about 55 miles per hour, it's really just five miles per hour less than, you know, freeway speed limit, and this is a road that goes through a neighborhood that has people biking and walking and jogging on it. So, while we wait for the Lost Pacitas bike path to be developed, I still see that project being quite a few years out, and I'd like to just remind council that ideally, we would be making Lost Pacitas safer as soon as possible and not raising the speed limit on it. Another project is Old Coast Highway, so that project runs on the east side, and it's going to be 45 miles per hour, and it's actually going to be going parallel to a park. So, you know, it's just important to think about the context of the neighborhoods that these streets are going through and the sort of environment that you are creating for biking and walking with higher speed limits. And furthermore, the vehicle, oversized vehicle parking ordinance is, it's interesting that these are, these two items are on the consent calendar together because I know that a lot of the motivation for the oversized vehicle parking ordinance directly relates to making our streets safer for biking and walking, and so I would love to see Santa Barbara grow in a direction where people feel safe and comfortable biking on a street, walking on a street, and I'd like us to think about that as we design and set speed limits for these roadways. Thank you.
Thank you. Just on this item, not a question for you, thank you very much, Eve.
Okay.
But just to clarify, perhaps someone from Public Works, about the process here and if we don't follow the, oh, there's Mr. Bailey or Ms. Bjork, how we can or cannot enforce the rules. Thank you, Ms. Sanford.
I actually, just, I also brought a few handouts that I think you might be interested.
Sure, you can just hand that to the clerk. That's fine. Mr. Bailey, if you could explain that, that would be appreciative.
Madam Mayor, good afternoon. My name is Derek Bailey. I'm with the city's Public Works Department. Just take a couple minutes just to explain speed limits. We have to follow the California Vehicle Code. The California Vehicle Code establishes the procedure which we, as a city, have to follow when we set speed limits. It's not just the state, it's every agency in California, and as Ms. Sanford said, we do have to set the speed limit based on the 85th percentile speed, and that has to be updated every seven years. The 85th percentile speed is determined by, we do what's called a site survey, and we collect all the speeds traveling on a row, on a road, and the 85th percentile is the speed at which 85% below and 15% above where that speed falls. That's just a graphical representation of the 85th percentile speed. And finally, why the rules are in place. The state put these rules into place, into the vehicle code. They have a really strong policy at the state level against speed traps, and a speed trap is setting the speed limit artificially low that reasonable drivers end up speeding. So, we, as a city, have to follow these rules. We can put speed limit signs up that are lower than what the speed survey says, but what ends up happening is the police department can't enforce. So, that's the, that's what we're in. For the ordinance change in front of you today, there is only one speed limit that's increasing. That's West Carrillo Street between the freeway and San Andreas Street. That's, will be going from 25 to 30 miles an hour. There are four speed limits that are decreasing: Sammerken Drive, San Pasquale Street, Santa Barbara Street, and Treasure Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez, did you have a question?
So, the, I agree wholeheartedly that those two particular examples are troublesome, Lost Pacitas and Old Coast Highway. Is there a plan that the city has? I know Lost Pacitas is kind of a construction zone now, to impose traffic calming measures or to do something that would, without extra enforcement, although that's certainly an option, get people to drive a little more cautiously?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, traffic calming on arterial streets is especially challenging. We don't have the toolbox that we would have on residential streets because we can't use any physical devices to slow traffic down because arterial streets by nature are meant to move traffic. They're emergency response routes, so our emergency service providers can get to where they need to go quickly. As far as what we can do and what we've been talking about as part of the pathway project is doing things like narrowing the lanes, but the best tool we have is police enforcement. So, the more police resources we have available for speed enforcement in the city, the safer we'll be.
Great. And then also, the other area of concern is between Milpis and APS, those streets that connect the two, particularly cars going dry, driving downhill habitually speed and blow-through stop signs. And I noticed none of these streets are listed in here. Are they coming up for a survey, or what's the status there?
I'll have to get back to you on when those are scheduled to be re-surveyed, but as far as things we could do, there's traditional traffic calming-type measures. We don't have a funded traffic calming program now in the city. That competes with all of the other street maintenance challenges we have in the city right now. But again, as far as running stop signs, that gets back to police enforcement, and really, the best tool we have for traffic safety is more police enforcement.
What are the mechanisms? Vision Zero was brought up. What are you doing differently, or what kind of reporting can the council expect to receive this year in terms of accidents, pedestrians, bikes, and cars?
We produce, and every other year, collision reports. We, we haven't really made it widely distributed. We mostly use it internal in order to generate lists of high collision locations that are suitable for treatment and that we should be focusing on to try and reduce the collision rate, but we'd be happy to share that with you. The data that we have tends to be a year or two behind because we get most of that data back to us from the state, and it takes them a while to process collision reports and then make that available, data available to us.
So, I'm wondering then, who initially writes the report? Is that the PD?
It is the police department.
Okay. So, they actually have the data, and I'm not sure how accessible it is to them in terms of deciding if they want to change up enforcement, or is that something you work with them on?
We work with them on it. They, they're very proactive with the resources that they have in terms of special enforcement and just day-to-day enforcement. You know, every once in a while, they do put it out in the news that they are doing special enforcement, like a crosswalk enforcement or focusing on bikes or motorcycles on a particular day. So, they do use that data. The data that we get back from the state, it's just a little more detailed. So, they, they definitely have data available within their system to tell them how many pedestrians and bikes are getting hit, but the data that we get back from the state is a little bit more location-specific, and we can start creating graphical representations and charts and other tools that help us.
Is there anything the council can do to help you work more closely with police and maybe kind of eliminate that time lag? Because it sounds like it's a pretty significant time lag, and we don't want to go in after someone's been hit by a car and then fix the problem.
We are in the process right now of implementing a new system. We've recently procured a new software program, and we're working on some, some fixes that'll streamline that process from the data going from the police collision report into the database. So, that is being worked on. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone need to vote on this separately?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I continue to be opposed to the oversized vehicle ordinance.
Okay, we're still talking.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Number two. So, I just wanted to make sure, number two. All right. So, that's number two. We'll hold on for the consent calendar vote on that. Item three is, was already read. This is the over, the oversized vehicle parking ban. Go ahead, Ms. Carrillo.
Thank you.
Maria. Carrillo, Maria, sorry. Maria.
Thank you. I just need to be consistent with last week's vote and vote no.
Okay. So, can we have a motion for item three?
So, move.
Moved by Rouse, second by Hotchkiss. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Opposed.
Okay. So, it's 5-2 with Hart and Maria opposed. We have a speaker slip for item 10, which is, if you could read item 10.
Item 10, on bill financing agreement for lighting upgrade at the Granada Garage.
Thank you. Mr. Hackett, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Mike Hackett. I'm with Energy Answers LLC. We're a clean energy finance consulting company, providing advice and assistance to commercial property owners and local governments in identifying funding options and resources for the installation of energy efficiency in solar projects. I'm here today to speak in support of the staff report and the city's use of the on bill financing program to subsidize the lighting upgrade project at the Granada Garage. OBF funding for this project, as it has for seven other city projects, can and will continue to produce substantial reductions in the city's utility bills while providing new equipment requiring less energy and maintenance. OBF financing is a financing option that demonstrates responsible stewardship of the city's financial resources. Now that the solar airport project is moving forward, I would encourage the city to explore other solar projects and new financing options which can offer even greater savings in the future by adopting a 100% renewable energy goal, installing financially viable solar projects, exploring community choice energy program, authorizing a pace financing program for residential and commercial property owners. The city has developed a set of creative, but practical and effective comprehensive solutions for its residents, both homeowners and businesses, and I want to compliment you on that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item 11, if you could read that.
Item 11, contract for studies on certain aspects of the average unit size density incentive program.
Thank you. Mr. Hart.
Yeah, I just had questions of timing about this. Seems to me we need to have occupied units with information about the tenancy, information about the rents, before we do a study that takes those data points and makes assumptions and analysis of that, and I'm not certain that we have enough of those occupied units to have enough information to make a credible study. And so, help me understand the timing of those interrelated pieces.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hart. The nexus and economic feasibility studies are not addressing the question that you pose. What we're looking at are two objectives that council directed the Housing Task Force to look at, and the first one is to determine the impact of any sort of inclusionary housing fee on the economic feasibility of projects so that we can determine how many affordable units might be included in a project upfront so that we get more capital A affordable units in these new AUD projects. You're right, there have not been enough completed to actually determine what the rents are on the completed projects, but again, that's not something that these studies are covering.
Well, I really am confused then because I don't know how you could decide what the profitability level of a development would be without knowing what the rent is.
They base the, each developer gets a loan, and they submit a pro forma, and they determine the rents that they will anticipate collecting in order to get their financing, and those, that information will be investigated by our consultant. So, it won't be real-time figures, but it will be projected figures based upon the pro forma rents.
I see. So, this is all based on the pro forma. Well, I think that's exactly my point then, is that I think the actual experience as it's occurring is potentially in contrast to performance that people optimistically put together in order to get these projects financed and approved, and I'm, I'm curious to know about how those things are diverging in the real marketplace, and I'm more interested in knowing facts on the ground and having that inform a study like this. To me, it's much more valuable than a theoretical study about something that was on paper. So, to me, this is putting the cart before the horse. I don't know that this is a wise expenditure of money at this moment in time. I think it would, could be a very useful study at the right time when there is actually evidence to base it on, and so that, I find this timing odd and theoretical and not as practical as it could be.
That's a good point. I, the Housing Task Force decided unanimously to go ahead and order these studies now so that they could then make better-informed recommendations to council.
Okay. Maybe the question then is for somebody on the Housing Task Force. Isn't Councilmember White the chair of that task force?
Yeah, Mr. Dominguez has his light on, and you're on the task force, correct?
Okay.
So, Mr. Dominguez, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, like Ms. Randolph just said, this passed 7-0 on Housing Task Force. We took this up as a council about a year ago, and it didn't have enough votes to pass then, but people were excited about the prospect and pushed it off until this July, so now we're here in July. So, the Housing Task Force action actually paralleled what the council had directed in a separate vein. The studies that these consultants will perform will actually look at the rents on the ground. They're not making up rents, they're not using rents from other cities. We have four of these studies posted online on the Housing Task Force homepage, so if anyone's curious about how these studies are designed and executed, it's, there's an easy place to go for these, but these will give us actual facts and hard evidence in Santa Barbara to move forward. This is what every other jurisdiction in California is looking at. Everyone else is doing inclusionary housing. We're the only one on the planet not doing inclusionary housing. Mr. Gallegos summed it up. These, these units that are being built, they may be great for certain purposes, but they're not at all affordable, and this AUD was supposed to promote affordable housing. And if I sound irked, it's because I am a little bit, but because we've had developers up here, and that every other sentence has the word affordable in it, but there's absolutely zero affordability built in under layman's terms. So, we have to be really careful up here, the language we use, and I would encourage staff to correct the record when you have people at the podium talking about how affordable their project is, but there's nothing built in to ensure that. So, it's just a matter of truth in advertising. Again, these, these programs may serve a certain need, but let's make sure it's clear that this is not a government-affordable housing program. We're not capping rents, we're not holding units aside, we're not subsidizing them. There's none of that taking place.
Well, now, I'm really confused because Councilmember Dominguez said the exact opposite of what Ms. Randolph said. Ms. Randolph said that we don't have rent information in existence, that we will not be using that for the study. Councilmember Dominguez said that's exactly what we're going to do. So, I really don't understand what's going on.
Just to respond, we don't have the data as a city, but the consultants will go out there and study it. That's why we hire them to do it. That's their expertise. They do it up and down the state. They're the best positioned to do it effectively, efficiently, and accurately.
Well, now, I do understand. So, what we're going to do is we're going to take theoretical information from another community and apply it in a theoretical model to our situation. Ms. Randolph shaking her head.
Thank you.
Do you like to clarify that, Ms. Randolph?
I would like to clarify that. The consultant will look at projects that are in the pipeline, and they will glean information from actual Santa Barbara projects that are in the pipeline, as well as look at those that are complete and running up.
Well, I guess the, the end of the point is that I don't think this is the right time. I think it would be better served to have real information on real projects, have that inform a comprehensive study of our unique individual rental market and the impact of these projects in our real world. I don't think the timing of this actually makes sense, so I'll be voting no.
Okay. So, so we need to vote on this item. This is item 11 separately from the consent calendar. Is there a motion for item 11?
Move item 11.
Okay. Moved by White, second by Hotchkiss. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Okay. So, that's 6-1 with Hart opposed. All right. Now, we have a speaker's request for item 12. Could you read item 12, please?
Item 12, Tahigas Resource Recovery Project.
Thank you. Anna Citron?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Anna Citron with the Law Office of Mark Chitillo, representing the Gaviota Coast Conservancy. We fully support the recommendation as outlined in your council agenda report and ask that the council authorize city staff to work with county staff on a negotiated resolution to avoid paying funds to the county for the Tahigas Resource Recovery Project due to the delay in the project. Further, we agree with staff that there is value in continuing to reach out to the county to get a detailed understanding of the impact of any delay on the timing and ultimate cost of the project before making any payments to the county. As part of this process, we request that council, or that, that staff press the county for answers to the hard questions surrounding this project. The county has every incentive to pay The county has every incentive to paint a very rosy picture of what's going on, but we need to know what is really going on. Some of these questions include what the realistic timeline for project completion is, what coastal permitting may be necessary, and what the financial consequences of the delay are, including any increased cost to the city and ratepayers, and ultimately whether the project still pencils out given the delay. Unless and until these hard questions are answered to the satisfaction of the city, no payment to the county should be made. We also request that council direct staff to look into alternative measures that the city could take to achieve compliance with state diversion and carbon reduction goals independent of the Tahigus Resource Recovery Project. As part of this process, we encourage the city to evaluate whether a reduction in carbon emissions can be better achieved with an approach that focuses on creating high-quality compost for use in carbon farming. It's important that the city get a head start on this process to make sure the city is prepared in the event that the Tahigus Resource Recovery Project does not proceed as planned or is substantially delayed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone comment on this one? All right, last one, speaker slip for consent, item 17. This was setting a date. Yeah, if you could just read the item 17.
Certainly, item 17, set a date for public hearing regarding appeal of historic landmark commissions, May 31, 2017, approval of project design and final approval for 1809 Mira Vista Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Wiley, welcome back in this capacity, and then Christopher Jacobs. Good afternoon.
Members of the council, I know you've got a full agenda today. I don't want to take much of your time. Because this is a consent agenda item and you don't typically get a staff report, we can't tell if you were advised of something that was offered in the appellant's letter. I represent Dr. Eric and Floret Genikian, the owners of the home at 1807 Mira Vista. The appeal involves an addition to a home right next door at 1809 Mira Vista, and it's an addition to the rear of the home. The offer, the suggestion in the appeal letter was that the council use its authority under Chapter 1.30 of the municipal code to refer this appeal to the Single Family Design Board. And the reason we're suggesting that, among other things, we don't feel this is an item that's appropriate for the city council to have to use its valuable time to inquire in. And I frankly advise the Genikians that the city council does not like to second-guess its design review boards, its citizen volunteer design professionals in most cases. So, as some of you, I think, probably know, Chapter 1.30 allows the city council to refer an appeal to an appropriate city board or commission. There are actually two items before the HLC on this property, 1809 Mira Vista. One was the Historic Resources Report and the designation of the home at 1809 as a structure of merit. That was done, the home is now a structure of merit. The Genikians have never opposed that. They recognize the historic nature of the design of this home. This appeal, though, was the second item, and that was Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance Review. And I think you know that the HLC just is apparently not very familiar with NPO review. They don't typically do it. That's the sort of thing that the Single Family Design Board is very good at. That's what, by and large, the NPO involves a Single Family Design Board. And I have to tell you, this appeal was filed in large part out of frustration on the part of the Genikians that they... The HLC, and I was there for most of it, gave cursory review to the NPO on this project. They barely discussed it. For example, as you know, the NPO involves...
Mr. Wiley, you're way beyond your two minutes.
I'm sorry. Well, I just want to say, they gave cursory review to the NPO in this case and approved the project. And the Genikians are offering, if you would refer this to the Single Family Design Board, that would be the end of it. There would be no appeal on their part. We would stipulate that they would not appeal the decision by the Single Family Design Board. They just would like to get... And finally, the second item, the site visit. The HLC scheduled a site visit, but before that, they requested story polls, so the site visit had some meaning. I'd like, if you will, to clarify that the council is also expecting to see story polls. If you do decide to hear this appeal...
Mr. Dominguez has a question for you.
It's not for him, it's for staff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wiley. We do have another speaker on this item. Do you want to hear that first?
Well, I was gonna... And maybe I will, but I wanted to find out if the referral idea was something that has legal merit.
Mr. Vincent.
Madam Mayor and members of council, Section 1.30.050 of the municipal code does authorize the city council to refer appeals to subordinate bodies. Before you consider that, I think you should hear from the other side. Mr. Wiley mentioned that his clients have, if you were to accept their proposal, that they would waive any further appeals back to the city council. That section, that code section, does not specify anything further, so it doesn't necessarily mean that the appeal wouldn't come back to the city council after going to the SFB. But it is something that is allowed under the code.
Okay, Mr. Jacobs.
Sorry, I'm staggering up here. I had knee surgery last week.
Well, you're standing well, so, good. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Christopher Jacobs, and I'm appearing today on behalf of the owners of 1809 Mira Vista, John and Darrell Stigall. We urge you to go forward with the staff's recommendation because this is a house that is in desperate need of repair and upgrading, and that repair and upgrading will occur as part of a very sensitively designed and relatively minor and innocuous remodel. The house is a 1920s Windsor Sewell home. It's largely original. The Stigalls want to add on to the family, add a family room and raise the garage slightly. There are no view impacts that we're aware of regarding the adjoining property of the appellant's. And contrary to Mr. Wiley's statements, we think that all of the findings required to be made for approval of this project, including the NPO findings, were actually made by the Historic Landmarks Commission, and I believe that those findings were supported by substantial evidence. There was a historical report that carefully considered every elevation of the house and all of the modifications that were being proposed. It was done by Post Hazeltine. It supports the project emphatically. I think that we would not be comfortable with waiving the right of appeal, so if you were to refer it back to Single Family Design Board, which I feel is unnecessary because all the findings have already been made, but it would be bouncing around and it would continue to come back on appeal to you if it were to go against the Stigalls. And so, I encourage you to accept staff's recommendation and move forward with this appeal to your council so that we can get a definitive decision on the project and so that these property owners can move forward with their project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez, back to staff?
I'd like to pursue the referral idea, and I don't know if we can do that today by motion.
Well, today is just setting the date for the appeal, so it's not doing any other action.
If we denied setting the date, could we then set it? What would be the correct council process?
I would think we would say yes or no, or tabling setting the date pending new information. That's another option, unless, Mr. Vincent, you have...
Well, Madam Mayor and members of council, I would say that the city council's action, whether it is to set a date for the appeal hearing before the city council or to refer the item to a subordinate body, is taken under the same municipal code section. You have both parties that are interested, primarily interested here. They understood that the options before the city council, it's available to the council today to consider either one.
So, that would be my motion then, to refer it to the Single Family Design Board.
Is there a second? Okay, that dies for lack of a second. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Mr. Vincent, just to clarify, what advantage is there to referring this to the Single Family Design Board, other than putting a few more months on the calendar?
Madam Mayor and members of council, it's not my position to say what advantage there would be. This is Mr. Wiley's proposal. It's available as a choice. I have not, in the 22 years that I've worked for the city, seen the city council take advantage of this particular ordinance section and refer an appeal to a subordinate body rather than in hearing an appeal. But I guess I would defer any answer to that question and further to Mr. Wiley.
I don't want to do that. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With all due respect to Mr. Wiley and his arguments and his clients, I move the staff recommendation. We're okay hearing it. I'm happy to hear this appeal. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. So, this is just to move item 17 as written? Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dominguez?
Yeah, I just feel that the Single Family Design Board, this is what they do. They look at single-family units. They're going to bring it to us. We're going to have a lot of questions, there's going to be a lot of wasted time. And I just wanted to get a clarification. Mr. Hotchkiss, when you talked about months, are you assessing that it would take longer if it went to Single Family Design Board than versus us? Because it looks like we're putting it back to September. That doesn't seem speedy by any stretch.
No, it just gets bounced back to another level and probably comes back to us, so...
Well, Mr. Wiley said on the record that he's not going to bring it back to us.
But not Mr. Jacobs. And it's possible that Single Family Design could deny the project, which would make the appeal go the other direction, so that we don't know the answer to that. So, Mr. Vincent, you said that even though Mr. Wiley waived his right to appeal, should it go to SFB, that doesn't mean someone else can't appeal any decision from SFB. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, so, we have a motion. This is to move item 17. Any other to the motion? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Okay, that's six one with Dominguez opposed. Okay, so, now, we have the balance of the consent calendar to approve. This is everything but item 3, 11, and 17. Is there a motion? Motion by White, second by Dominguez, all in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. All right. That was a longer consent calendar, but there was a lot of items on there. So, we'll move on to item number 22. Excuse me. Item 22, request from councilmembers Rouse and White regarding the Coleman family overlook, Coast Guard overlook. Great, so, this is a request from two councilmembers, so I'd like to invite Mr. Rouse and Mr. White if you'd like to make any opening comments. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a fabulous example of a neighborhood effort brought by the Mesa Architects Group in conjunction with cooperation with the Ealing's Park as a oversight nonprofit to turn what is basically a weed patch between a residential area and the Coast Guard station into a nice little overlook. And I'll let them describe it a little bit further, but totally a citizen-driven thing. A lot of effort and a lot of time went into it, and the work has just begun, as Ms. Perez could probably tell you. But it's a great neighborhood asset, and I certainly appreciate it being on the Mesa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I can remember when the Cliff Drive discussion of reversion to city ownership began, and the Mesa Architects said, "Well, you know, we want to participate in this, and we realize there's no money and no plan." But with no money and no plan, the Mesa Architects are managing to get restripings, roundabouts, and now we have overlooks happening on the Mesa. So, I'd like to see what would happen if we could give you a nice big budget and see what could happen to the Mesa. But anyway, it's just another inspiration and of smart and focused community service and community participation. So, really excited that we were able to bring this forward.
Okay, I know, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Nelson, did you want to present something at this point? Did you have a question, Mr. Hotchkiss, first?
I do. Maybe I could cover it in the course of your presentation. I'm wondering if the view is out, and also, is this contiguous to the park?
I'll start by introducing myself. I'm Dennis Thompson, and Laurel Perez and I are here today on behalf of the Mesa Architects. Thank you for the kind words. Mesa Architects, by the way, have been working for about 10 years now to beautify and build community in our neighborhood. So, we're proud of our neighborhood and we're proud of what we do. This project has to do with 150-foot-long bluff-top property that the Coast Guard regards as surplus property. In this photograph here and this drawing, Meigs Road is the road above, and just above that is Washington Elementary School, so that's the location. The Coast Guard is willing to give it to a public agency, not to a private nonprofit. So, we're asking that you contract with the Coast Guard, and at the same time, then you contract with Ealing's Park, who has agreed to exercise administrative responsibility for this. We have a community coalition ready and willing to raise the funds, to build the park, to permit the park, to design the park. We've got pro bono services for most of those things, and then to maintain the park. So, our fundraising goal is about $250,000. I don't think we'll need nearly that much for the initial part, so we'll have years of maintenance to do with community funding. And, you know, if and when that money runs out, there'll be another fundraising drive because I don't think anyone's going to want to give up an asset like this after it's existed. Did I answer your question, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Yeah, I got more, but not now.
Okay. I think it would be important for Mike Nelson of Ealing's Park Foundation to give you a sense of what their participation would be.
Thank you, welcome.
Mayor, city councilmembers, my name is Mike Nelson. I'm the executive director of the Ealing's Park Foundation and also a member of the Board of the Mesa Business Association, which wholeheartedly endorses this project. The Board of Directors and the foundation is trying to be making an effort to have greater community engagement and outreach on the Mesa and help for projects that need some support, and we would like to support the Mesa Architects in making this happen. We would essentially be agreeing to be sort of the organizational vessel, if you will, to provide tax breaks to the donors and accountability. And we would expect, I had a good conversation with Jill Zachary at Parks yesterday, that as the city would approach the Coast Guard and develop your license agreement with them, we would concurrently work with the city to develop a project agreement. So, I intend, if the council moves forward with this, I intend to take this to my board at its August meeting and urge them to formally endorse the project. Thank you.
Great, well, thank you for stepping up also. Anything else, Mr. Thompson, on this, or...
Yeah, I think I failed to say that one of the participants is the Coleman family, who has a long history on the Mesa, and they would be, we would hope to name this little parklet the Coleman Family Overlook, so that's part of the picture.
Great, thank you. Okay, so, it's to the council. Mr. Hotchkiss, you had some other questions?
How are we handling parking for this?
You know, I think this is back to your question. Mesa Park is about 100 yards to the west.
Right.
Has a large parking lot, has restrooms, has water and electricity. This park would have none of that.
Okay.
So, it'd be kind of a satellite of Mesa Park.
So, they'll walk down from Mesa Park, park in Mesa Park and walk down here?
Or there's probably 5, 10 cars worth of parallel parking right here at the face of the park.
Okay. On behalf of the owners of that house there, we want to obviously make it a pass... It's a passive park, correct?
Right.
Is there fencing or something that would go between the park and their house?
We've been in discussion with that owner for about five years. She's a friend, she's willing to donate to the effort, and we've moved the walking path away from her house, and she has her own fence already.
Oh, yes.
So, at her request, we moved the pathway away.
Is he or she in support of the project?
Yeah, they're willing to donate to the construction. Yes, they're in support.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to clarify a few things, maybe with Ms. Perez's help, in terms of the infrastructure itself. The plan itself involves no plumbing, no electrical, no structural of any kind. Is that a fair statement?
Councilman Rouse, that's correct.
All right. In terms of the ongoing maintenance for the park, the oversight and all that, it's going to be the endowment the park raises.
That's correct. So, we have an endowment. We also have volunteers within the community who have committed to not just installation but long-term maintenance, including Santa Barbara City College Horticulture Department as well as a few other gardening, local gardening groups in town.
And I realize that Mr. Colón and Mr. Casey have worked together with you on this and also have a deep understanding of this licensing agreement thing, but the land remains in the ownership of the Coast Guard, is it not?
That is correct. And so, part of the deal is a licensing agreement between the city of Santa Barbara, the U.S. Coast Guard. The permit process will be largely handled by, well, I'll be handling the permit process, and what we'll be seeking is a California Coastal Commission permit directly from coastal staff in Ventura. Coast Guard will participate in that application process in terms of having to...
In terms of having to sign that application form.
And if and when the part of the property reverts to the Coast Guard control, will there be a fund or there be financing set up for that to revert the property to -- well, its original site isn't -- its original status isn't exactly attractive, but, I mean, would that be part of the deal?
That's part of our fundraising aspect, is to provide for funds, not just for installation, but for decommissioning of the overlook, should that ever happen in the future.
And as far as any kind of financial impact or maintenance obligation on the city's part, is there any?
I would have to -- I don't think so. I would have to defer to your city attorney for those kinds of questions, or Mr. Casey.
Okay, my understanding is jumping into this deal, there was not going to be any, so just from my colleagues...
That's our understanding. That's -- yes.
Yeah. I know Mr. Cologne's not here, but that's to get everybody in their comfort zone, I think. That was how we worked it out.
That's right. That's consistent with the conversations I've had with Mr. Cologne and pretty much everybody that we've been talking to, including U.S. Coast Guard.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This seems like a great idea. I would just be concerned about development of any kind of active recreation there. I can't tell. There isn't a topographic map here. I don't know. The other image looked like it dropped off, and so there is no room for a tennis court or children's play area. Is there a way to put a conservation easement on it? I just -- maybe the public would be assured that nothing active will happen there, that it'll remain open space.
I think that other rendering shows it well. It's absolutely a passive space. We don't expect a picnic bench, maybe a couple of trash cans, and a few sitting benches. So it's a short-term passive park. There'd be a fence that would be now -- now is near the sidewalk, would be moved down the bluff, sort of out of sight. That's number nine or eight on the diagram there. So there'd be a low-key fence that would keep people from moving down the bluff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I first want to thank Mr. White and Mr. Rouse for bringing this forward officially, but really the thanks goes to the Mesa Architects and Ealing's Park for their persistence. I know this has been something in their bucket list for a long time along the Mesa, and this is just one of those examples of public-private partnerships. When they can work, they'll work really well. So I'm looking forward to seeing the final documents and having this move forward, and want to thank the Coleman family and everyone involved for -- it's a small little project, but I think it'll be meaningful once it's done. And it's one of those things that if we had all the funding in the world and our general fund to do, we'd probably do it, but priorities of other projects that are already in place that we need to maintain ourselves is taking priority. So stepping up is commendable. So thank you very much. So I will be supporting this. Mr. Dominguez?
I also will support. I want to echo your gratitude towards all the people involved, the three professionals who are here and using their time to the Ealing's Park Foundation, the Coast Guard for allowing this to happen, and then, of course, our own staff and Jill Zachary for pushing this forward. So I'm really psyched about this. I think this is going to be a great amenity for that corner.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Just a quick question, if I might. I don't know who to address this to. What's the timeline on this?
I'll take a stab at that. You know, the first thing that would happen would be the license agreement between the city and the U.S. Coast Guard. As soon as that's taken care of, I'll be filing applications with the California Coastal Commission. Based on conversations with them, it's probably going to take them a good four, five, six months to permit, to issue the coastal development permit. During that time, we will go forward to the ABR for a courtesy review, as well as take it to the Parks Commission for review. So we're probably looking at at least six months for just the permit process alone. And then following issuance of permits, this is a pretty simple project. It won't take more than, you know, a month or so to install.
So it'll be done in a year?
I hope so.
Maybe.
That's the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion regarding this item.
And that would be...
That would be.
[laughing].
That would be that the council directs staff to go ahead and facilitate whatever is needed to allow the Mesa Architects Group to go forward with the Coleman overlook?
Great. Okay. And who seconded? Mr. Hotchkiss, you seconded it? Okay. Anything else to the motion? All right. All in favor? Aye. Great. That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Item number 23.
Item 23, Appeal of the Historic Landmark Commission's Denial of a Short-Term Rental Hotel at 101 West Annapamou Street.
Thank you. Okay, so this is an appeal. Just to explain how this will work, we will have a staff presentation. Then we -- there are two appellants. So each appellant will have 20 minutes, sort of for each appellant. You can divide up amongst your speakers however you wish. You can use up to 20 minutes. Any time left over will be available to you at the end of public comment. We'll have -- if anyone from HLC is here, they can speak after the staff presentation. The appellant is also the applicant, so your 20 minutes is in that 1:20 minute component. After public comment, it comes to council, and it stays up here unless we have any specific questions for anyone else. And I do want to ask if anyone had any ex parte communications with anyone related to this appeal before moving forward. Has anyone had any? Actually, I did have a meeting with Dan Catano and Ava Turunchak soon after the appeal was made. I've known Mr. Catano for 20-something years, and it was more out of a bafflement of process, which, and I'll just say, as part of that meeting, I did have some questions that I believe will be answered as part of the staff presentation as to why was it the HLC was the one that heard this if there was no design review? That was a question I had, and how that process worked. So that was what I got out of that particular meeting. And, all right, with that, Ms. Burke, it's all yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. The appeal before you today is regarding a property located at 101 West Annapamou Street. Specifically, the project proposal that is of today's discussion is a proposal to convert an existing 1,007-square-foot residential unit in a mixed-use building to a short-term rental hotel use. The unit is part of a four-story building. It is the entire fourth floor of the four-story building. The bottom three floors are commercial office space, and there are no exterior alterations required as part of this proposal and no changes to the number of parking spaces. This here, just to orient you, shows the location of 101 West Annapamou. It's on the corner of Annapamou and Chapala Streets. And here is a street view of it, and the unit is up here. You can see just a portion of it there in that photo. And here, to provide some context for the zoning of the site and the surrounding zoning, here is our site right here in the C2 zone, surrounded largely by C2-zone properties. And then here, it transitions into the R4 zone as we go towards the west. The required discretionary application for this proposal is a development plan, and that is because it's a proposal involving a conversion of more than 1,000 square feet of floor area from a residential to a non-residential use. It was heard and decided by the Historic Landmarks Commission, and they denied the application on April 19, 2017. There are two appellants to this project before you. One is representing the applicant, and one is representing a variety of homeowners and interested parties that have an interest in converting residential units to hotel use. The four appeal issues can be summarized basically in the four bullets there, and I'll go through these one by one through the following slides. But in essence, they're -- questioned staff's application of the hotel conversion ordinance to these applications. Also, our interpretation that these uses are a non-residential use. Therefore, then, we apply the Non-Residential Growth Management Program requirements to these applications, and that was questioned in one of the appeals as well. And then both appellants had questions or took issue with HLC's inability to make the finding that the project's consistent with sound community planning. The first involves an assertion by Mr. Goran that the project is not subject to the hotel conversion ordinance, and staff agrees with that assertion. The Municipal Code, Chapter 28.88, applies to the conversion of residential units to condominiums, cooperatives, and hotels or similar uses. That chapter has an exemption, though. When the project only involves the conversion of one unit on the lot, it's not subject to the requirements of that chapter. That is what we're dealing with in this particular case. It's only the conversion of one unit, so we did not require this application to meet the requirements of that chapter, and we are in agreement with Mr. Goran on that point. We do believe, though, that does not preclude the applicability of other elements of the municipal code to this project. In terms of the classification of these uses as either residential or non-residential, there are two applicable definitions in the zoning ordinance that staff looks to, and that is the definition of a residential unit and the definition of a hotel. The residential unit definition has two parts. The first is a building or portion thereof designed or occupied for residential purposes containing not more than one kitchen, but not including hotels or boarding houses. The second subsection of that definition allows the community development director to declare a particular structure, a residential unit, when it contains certain elements. And this definition goes on till this 14 different elements that may be considered when the director is defining a structure as a residential unit. We typically look to that definition, that section of that definition and those elements when we are investigating and enforcing against illegal dwelling units. So in this case, the most applicable subsection of the definition of a residential unit is subsection A, where it's designed or occupied for residential purposes with not more than one kitchen and not including hotels or boarding houses. The definition of a hotel is a building or group of buildings or portion thereof which is designed for or occupied as the temporary abiding place for less than 30 consecutive days, including but not limited to auto courts, bed and breakfast dens, hostels, inns, motels, motor lodges, timeshare projects, tourist courts, and other similar uses. I should note that at the time, this definition was added to the municipal code. Vacation rentals, short-term rentals, were not in the norm. So this was -- it was not listed as one of these other items in this string of uses towards the end of this definition. But we believe the definition of a hotel encompasses short-term rentals because individuals stay for less than 30 consecutive days, and that's been staff's consistent interpretation since 2009, when we began receiving complaints and investigating unpermitted short-term rentals in the city. Mr. Goran also asserts that short-term rentals should not be subject to the city's non-residential growth management program. I believe largely because of his prior argument that he believes these should be characterized as a residential use. However, because staff interprets these uses as hotels, they are a non-residential or commercial use, and thus they're subject to the growth management program. As I'm sure you're aware, the city has had a growth management program for non-residential development in place since 1989. The city has an interest in managing non-residential growth in the city to make sure that we live within our resources. So to that end, we have limitations on growth, and they're divided into certain categories. The non-residential growth management program applies to all projects that are defined as a non-residential construction project, and that definition is provided there at the bottom of the slide, which consists of the construction of new non-residential floor area or the conversion of existing residential floor area to non-residential use. And that is what we believe we have in this case. Now, in terms of who is the decision-maker for development plans that are subject to the growth management program, that's determined based on the size and the amount of square footage involved in the proposal. So any non-residential construction project over 1,000 square feet requires a development plan approval by certain bodies. Design review boards or the staff hearing officer are the decision-maker for projects that involve between 1,001 and 3,000 square feet, which is the case here. Projects involving more non-residential square footage than that go to the Planning Commission for Decision. And so that answers the question, is why was this project before the HLC when there were no exterior alterations involved? It's as the decision-makers laid out in the municipal code for development plans, and we have this hierarchical treatment of it, and it was intended to streamline the review of the smaller development plans so that not all of them had to go the Planning Commission. Also, the Non-Residential Growth Management Program states that land use permits are subject to the program and must comply with it. As I mentioned earlier, we have limitation on non-residential development in the city. We must allocate square footage from a variety of categories when we look at these projects and look at the site and what square footage that site is able to draw from. So in this case, the project would be using its minor square footage allocation. Each lot in the city is allocated 1,000 square feet of minor addition for non-residential development, and only projects, only sites within the downtown area can access the small addition square footage, of which this project would need to, has requested seven square feet of small addition in order to convert the entire unit of 1,007 square feet. So that, again, is why there is this process that all non-residential construction projects need to be reviewed at some level by city staff or a discretionary decision-maker. Similarly, we must evaluate the project for consistency with our traffic management strategy, and that, in essence, is it consistent with where we want to see future non-residential development being located? And that's our different areas for growth of non-residential development. The downtown core is where we want to focus the growth. That's why downtown area is the only area that's allowed to access the small addition pool of square footage. And elsewhere, they must rely on inter-area transfers or some other mechanism to add more than 1,000 square feet to existing sites. The HLC denied this application because they could not make the second of four required findings for the development plan application, and that is finding B, that the proposed development is consistent with the principles of sound community planning. Their statement for why they couldn't make that finding was, "Given the critical shortage of housing, the imposition of the new state legislation for accessory dwelling units, and the intent of city council to foster the average unit size density incentive program, the HLC could not support the loss of one residential unit, which would be the result of this proposal to convert the unit to a hotel." Both appellants question the HLC's finding for denial based on their belief that the project is not consistent with the principles of sound community planning. So the last of the four appeal issues is this issue. The code, although the development plan findings are outlined in the zoning ordinance, we don't have any guidance in the zoning ordinance as to what entails sound community planning, but it's logical to look to the general plan, as it is our overarching guiding document for development in the city. And so a project that is consistent with general plan policies could be argued to be sound community planning. We have, though, as you know, hundreds of policies in the general plan, and not every project could be consistent with all policies. They cover a wide range of issues. So typically, what staff does is we look to the most applicable policies, and we look for the highest level of compliance with the broadest range of policies. The ones most applicable here are found in the housing and land use elements, and they call for monitoring and reporting of the general plan's effectiveness in meeting its objectives on an annual basis. And that we do as part of our adaptive management program report. Each year, we report to city council and Planning Commission as to how the general plan is doing and meeting its objectives as we carry out the policies and implementation actions. Land use element policy, LG 1.2, specifically says that we should monitor resource capacities and policy effectiveness at intervals commensurate with housing element planning periods, which are an eight-year planning period. Before the HLC reviewed and took action on this project, we did prepare a memo and provided guidance and reasons for why we believe the findings could be made in this case, specific to the sound community planning finding. We relied on the project site zoning, which is C2, general commercial. It allows hotels. Similarly, the surrounding zoning and land uses, as I showed you before, are surrounded by zone districts that allow hotels, and we see a mix of land uses already in this area, commercial office, retail, residential, institutional uses surrounding this area. institutional uses surrounding this area. We also stated to the HLC that although this project would result in the loss of one unit, an incremental reduction in housing stock is expected, but that's balanced with the housing production we see during the same period. And so pursuant to housing element policies and our state reporting requirements, we monitor the net housing gains and losses in the city every year, and we report those to the state housing community development department, as well as to the council and planning commission. So I want to just update you on those figures. We didn't have these figures presented to HLC, so they did not have this in front of them, at least this detailed chart. So the quantified housing objectives of the housing element intend to lay out what could practically be developed over the eight-year period of a housing element. So it's not the RENA number, it's not the regional housing needs assessment number, where we must show that we have the zoning capacity to develop a certain number of units. These are actual, this is a realistic number that we believe we could achieve in an eight-year period, and it's broken out by income categories here. So our housing element anticipates production of just over 1,200 new housing units in this eight-year period in these different income categories. And to the right shows the units that we've permitted to date. These aren't necessarily constructed and occupied, but they've been permitted for the largely two calendar years. This 2017 data is only as of February 9th of this year. We don't have, we don't run regular reports on that. So largely, we're looking at two calendar years of data so far, and we have 468 units permitted. That does not include another 351 units that have been approved under the AUD program and 124 applications we have in just so far this year for accessory dwelling units. So that's again, another 670 units that could potentially be permitted in the next year. So this number, I say all this to say that I believe we're well on track to meet or exceed our quantified housing objectives for the housing element. And so that played a large role in staff's statement to the HLC that we believe that the finding of sound community planning could be made, even though this project would result in the loss of one unit. Also, important to point out, based on general plan policy direction, as well as good planning, we believe that an annual evaluation of the general plan is reasonable and feasible, and that any policy shifts or zoning changes that would be required as part of that or identified as part of that can be addressed then and as appropriate. But until then, we continue to apply the existing regulations to development proposals, and that's what we did in this case. So in conclusion, our recommendation is that council consider the appeal issues of the two appellants. You consider that in light of the required development plan findings, and then make a decision and direct staff to return with those, that decision and findings reflecting the outcome of the appeal. And I did expect Anthony Grunbein of the HLC to be here.
I don't see him.
I might have been pessimistic in our start time, but he might be coming in soon. I think I said 3:15.
Okay. Well, we'll have him participate during public comment if he gets in at this point. So just a clarification, I guess, a question for me. If, I think one of the questions that also came up in the appeal is the actual size of the unit, whether it really was a thousand, over 1,000 feet, square feet, the actual unit. And so can you, since there was a discrepancy there, can you explain how we got to that determination? I think it's 1,007 feet. And then secondly, if it was 994 square feet or, you know, under 1,000 square feet, what would that process have been, what, what, what would that process look like if, with the same type of application?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a floor plan on file, but we based the project description on what the applicant submitted and reported to us. We would typically confirm that through a building permit application process. In this case, there's not a building permit required for this conversion. It's only the development plan before you. And so we've relied on the applicant's data that they provided to us. If this proposal were under 1,000 square feet, then it would simply be subject to a zoning clearance, which is a ministerial, more or less paperwork filing on the staff's part to document that the project is under 1,000 square feet, that it does not require discretionary action, it doesn't require a building permit. And then we would hand that over to finance, so they would know that the use has been authorized by the zoning department and could then expect to receive TOT.
And that's not an appealable action, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if the applicant is saying, was questioning that it was under 1,000 square feet, and yet you're saying it's over 1,000 square feet using their documents, how did that happen?
I'm not quite sure. I wasn't aware that they were questioning why this was.
Unless I'm mistaken, so maybe that's part of what the applicants or the appellants, you're both can clarify, but I thought that was part of the concern. Okay, questions? Mr. Hart?
Yeah, when you look at the, the housing production numbers that you have in the staff report, do you take into consideration the loss of residential units that come from illegally operating STRs?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, we don't consider the loss of residential units based on illegal operation of short-term rentals. We would take into account the net loss through permitted short-term rentals.
But that really understates reality.
It does, but on the same token, we don't count illegal dwelling units in our account either, so we don't count over housing on the other side.
Okay.
I think Touche there. No, I'm sorry.
All right, well, thank you.
Mr. Dominguez?
The, the number you have here, the 1,208, just to put it in perspective, the RENA numbers, is that in the 4,000s?
Our regional housing needs allocation through 2022 is just over 4,000, 4,099 units.
So that seems like that number would be more appropriate in the situation to be looking at, because that's talking about the need that SB CAG and the state said the city has for housing units in these eight years. Is that correct?
The RENA number represents our capacity based on existing zoning to theoretically produce that many housing units.
Well, our capacity is around 9,000 units, if I understand correctly.
Well, through this planning period, so between 2014 and 2022, that's our.
That's the capacity number. The needs number is the 4,000.
Correct. The needs number is the 4,000.
And this 1,200 is just a prediction.
The 1,200 is based on the community's ability or willingness to absorb additional housing units, other environmental factors. They're unknown, but it is, the number is lower because we don't believe that the full capacity of the need would likely be met when you look at the discretionary decisions that need to be made for each housing project.
So it's, it's what your prediction is?
Yes.
How many will be built?
And it's also somewhat based on development trends, historic residential development and what we've seen.
So even if this number did come true, we'd still be short 2,800 and something units?
Based on the need that was assigned to us by SB CAG.
Right.
Yes.
And their need, I mean, you're, you're mentioning it like they're assigning the need to us, but their need is based on looking at growth trends in California and dividing that by how much the city's been growing. So our needs different than Santa Maria or Carpinteria. So they have a formula they use. We have the ability to comment on that number once they produce it, and we, we did this year, a very long, comprehensive comment, and I was proud of it because I've done commenting for other communities. But I think that number just reflects more what this body is looking at in terms of, are we building housing versus commercial space? So that's, that's the only reason I'm bringing that up. The other thing is, these numbers don't take into account induced demand of the, all the for rent properties that are market-based versus affordable. So these numbers should actually be higher because we're creating a lot of demand for new housing at the same time. Is that correct?
I can't speak to that here. I don't have that information in front of me. I wouldn't want to speculate. But these numbers represent, as I explained it, a more realistic expectation of what we think that we would see developed over the eight-year planning period.
Great, thank you.
So back to the 1,208 new housing units, that, that number was put together prior to the new state law on ADUs on, so, and you said there was over 100 applications to date. So if we were to look at that number again, would we expect it to be higher just based on applications for ADUs around the city?
Madam Mayor, correct. We developed this number when we were drafting the housing element, which was adopted in February of 2015. So we were generating these numbers in late 2014 based on development trends and expectations at that point. So we had no idea this ADU law would come through. So if going forward in our next planning period, when we go through that again in 2022, 2023, and looking back at historic development trends, we would see likely a big spike in this part of our development history and might adjust those numbers upward should that development trend continue.
Okay, thank you. All right. Yes, Mr. Rouse, and then we'll get to the appellate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Brooke, I'm a little bit confused. We were talking about an appeal of a, a single project, and yet we seem to be getting out in the community needs and the, the numbers, the RENA numbers and whatnot. So are we tackling a bigger animal here than just this one project? I mean, or is this an ad hoc hearing for this project? I mean, this almost sounds like we're going back to the, going back to the well. So I'm, I'm not, not really sure. We're talking about findings and certainly precedents, but the other side of the coin is, this is a single project. Is that correct?
Councilmember Rouse, that is correct. This is one project at 101 West Annapamoo Street, and it involves the conversion of one unit. I think the reason that the conversation is taking a larger turn is because one of the required findings is that the project is consistent with sound community planning. The HLC was unable to make that finding because this project results in the loss of one unit. So it, it has begged the question of not only what is sound community planning, but also is the loss of one unit a basis for denying these applications?
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we'll go to, I don't know which appellant wants to go first, Mr. Goran. Okay, so we have 20 minutes here at the podium. Or is it Mr. Katan? Are you all going together?
I'll go first.
You'll go first.
I just like to time myself.
Well, there is a, there is a timer right there at the, at the podium, so I'm going to start the clock now. Thank you.
I got one right here.
Great. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Jarrett Goran from Vanguard Planning, and I'm here on behalf of a group of property owners who are in a zone district that currently allows short-term rentals and hotels. It's the R4 Zone District. So I filed an appeal on behalf of those owners because there are some serious implications with the Historic Landmark Commission's findings that they made when they denied this project, or I should say, lack of findings. And I'll go through this stuff. Staff covered some things here. I'll just look at it again. I think perspective is really important in every case, but especially this case. That's the neighborhood we're in. It's, it's a commercial neighborhood. It's C2 all the way around us, and you can see that it's generally developed with commercial properties, large buildings. If we take a closer look at the site, here's our site at the corner of Chapala and Annapamoo Street. You can see all the parking. There's more parking that's tucked in under the building as well. Here's our site, looking at it from the street, and we've got a four-story, basically, office building. It's mixed use because the top floor is permitted as a single residential unit. So that's our unit up there, and to convert this unit into a short-term rental requires nothing, no changes to the outside, and actually, no changes to the inside either. The building code occupancy doesn't change. There isn't one single thing. If you ask your building staff, they'll tell you they don't have any permits to issue on this project. This gives you some context. Again, this is the front entry of the property. Here's our connection with the neighborhood. This is what it looks like right before you walk in the front door. Again, it is a commercial downtown area. So let's talk about the hotel conversion ordinance. So it's, it's the hotel conversion ordinance. If, if staff considers these to be hotels, so this, this would be what we'd look at. And basically, if you go to the second page in the hotel conversion ordinance, you can see that if you are creating a project and you're using no more than one existing dwelling unit as part of the project, it's not considered a conversion. Okay? That language says shall not be considered a conversion. And I'm not a lawyer, but that language is pretty clear, and to me, that means it is not being considered converted from something to something else. It's exempt from the hotel conversion ordinance, and staff agrees with that. And if we go further in that ordinance, then it's, it's this ordinance which is what creates the requirement for a development plan. When you look at the application requirements, this is where the, the requirement for a development plan comes from. It comes from a section of the municipal code that this project is exempt from, per the municipal code. So staff says that even though this is not subject to the hotel conversion ordinance, this is still a hotel conversion. So we have to talk about these non-residential growth management program findings. And here's the findings. Staff went over these. You know, nobody is disputing whether this is consistent with the zoning ordinance and city policies. Nobody's disputing whether this is going to have any sort of an adverse impact on aesthetics or anything else. It's not. They're not changing anything on the outside, and there's no traffic implications of the project. So the, the finding we're talking about here is this one, consistent with the principles of sound community planning. And after today, you're probably going to go to bed tonight with that ringing in your ears. You're going to hear it so many times. You're going to hear it a lot of times from me. That's the finding that's in question, and, and this is really the only thing that's at issue with, with what the HLC did, and it's, it's very critical what happened here. So, you know, how's the cities, the city determine sound community planning in the past? They have looked to see if projects are consistent with our general plan, and then, you know, we also have a zoning ordinance which implements the general plan. And it's, it's been modified from time to time, every time we've modified the general plan. And the city has spent years and hours and hours of effort in design review meetings and city council meetings with people giving up their time to come down and participate as members of the public, and thousands and thousands of dollars to develop these documents, which after long discussion and compromises, we have agreed that these are our guiding planning documents in the city of Santa Barbara. And the city staff, the public, people have a right to have their expectations that, that they can rely on what these documents say. And, and in general, actually, up until now, the city has basically found projects that are consistent with these things to be sound community planning, and they can make that finding. The HLC says no, they can't. And it's a very new way that they're interpreting this finding. So let's look at what their reasoning is. Their reasoning, basically, they added a couple of other things to it, but this is their, this is their main point, that there's, they cannot approve the conversion of one housing unit because we have a critical housing shortage. Okay, so this is your NGMP findings, and look at that date right there. Okay, this is, these were adopted by the city in 2013. In fact, a number of you were on the council when we adopted this. And, you know, I remember 2013, and what I don't remember about 2013 is there being, you know, a plethora of available for sale and rental housing for, you know, affordable rates for everybody who wanted it whenever they wanted it. We had a housing shortage in 2013 when we adopted this ordinance, which specifically provides for the conversion of residential units to non-residential uses. We can go back further. This was originally, it's the carryover of Measure E from 1989, and I was in high school in 1989, but I know from studying history, we had a housing shortage in Santa Barbara then. And, you know, we can take this back even further. Here's a letter that we found going through some old files in the city archives, and this, this was written by somebody trying to do a bed and breakfast back in 1982. trying to do a bed and breakfast back in 1982. And look at that, 1982. "We keep reading in the paper and hearing at the Planning Commission about the need for affordable housing in Santa Barbara." And then they go on to ask a whole lot of other questions about, you know, their confusion with the city process to convert things. But, you know, I guess the more things change, the more they stay the same, because people are pretty confused now. So, this is the HLC's next justification for their finding, imposition of the accessory dwelling unit law. This is what they're talking about. The state passed this law, went into effect in January. And this law allows people to create additional units on property that's zoned to allow for single-family residential use. It's to produce units. It's not to, it doesn't limit, it doesn't say that you can't take away a unit if other uses are, you know, allowed in the zone district where that unit is. This is just to produce more units. So, I'm not sure how this is a basis for anything. And then there's this, "The intent of the city council to foster the average unit size density program." I mean, again, that's a program intended to produce housing units. It doesn't say that, you know, we're freezing the conversion of other existing housing units to anything else. This is just a new program to produce more units. So, I wish somebody from the HLC had been here to explain this, because I can't say that I fully understand it. But it doesn't make a lot of sense to me as a planner. So, you know, none of these justifications really make sense. The HLC just sort of said, you know, "Not even one unit can go, and we can't make this finding, and we deny this project, 6-0." So, there's problems with that. Okay, probably the biggest is that it's arbitrary. The city has approved at least five of these projects since January of last year. These are five that I know about. There may be more than this. But you can see all of these here. ABR did all of these ones. Staff hearing officer did one, and, you know, one might say, "Oh, well, none of them were the HLC." Well, I mean, we all know that our boards in the city need to be consistent with each other and consistent with how they implement our adopted policies. You can't have one board do it one way and another board do it a completely different way, because then nobody can rely on anything. I think it's important to look at this one right here. That was June 7th at the staff hearing officer. That was after the HLC made its decision and after the ABR made two subsequent denials, which you'll get to see here on appeal. Basically, with all the same issues in place, and still, the staff hearing officer made that finding, that the conversion was consistent in that case. Now, and here's the minutes. I mean, you know, there's 13 people here who wrote in to the staff hearing officer and made this housing argument. There was virtually a form email that made this argument over and over again, and the staff hearing officer considered that and was able to make this finding, because the staff hearing officer, who's a planner, not an architect or a historian, looked at our planning policies and applied this standard the way the city's always done it, instead of getting confused. So, let's look at the implications of what the HLC did. Okay, they took this finding and, you know, sound community planning. We have a general plan and a zoning ordinance, and both of those allow for the conversion of residential uses to non-residential uses. And those conversions have been approved for decades, and the city's had to make this finding in every case, and they've done it hundreds of times. We have overlay zoning. Our commercial zones wrap in other zones that allow residential uses, and we have residential uses in a lot of our commercial zones. And a lot of the areas that we have that are zoned commercial have those structures in them. So, those structures are frequently converted to non-residential use. What does that look like? I mean, here's a bunch of examples, and, I mean, here's a doctor's office that used to be a house. This is, you know, several retail uses and something that was once a single-family home, residential. There's a single-family home that's a commercial use. There's a commercial leasing sign in front of it. This is a structural engineer's office who I work with. That's Don Sherry's office. You know, it was a house. It's an architect's office now. This here was a multi-unit apartment building. Friends of mine lived there in the late '90s, and there were several apartments, and the city approved that to be converted into an attorney's office, making this finding that's way over 1,000 square feet. So, I mean, these things are all over town. I went out and shot these pictures in an hour on one afternoon, and I could shoot 100 more of these pictures. This is what we do here, because our city is built out. When we need commercial space, we can't go to some vacant parcel and say, "Let's build a new commercial building." We have existing buildings, and we have zoning that allows a range of uses, including residential and commercial, and we change the use of buildings when the economy dictates it, or when somebody wants to take and do another permitted use. That's how we do it here. So, the HLC, the city can't be arbitrary and capricious how it applies policies and ordinances. It has to be consistent. And what the HLC did, denying this project, effectively, it's establishing a new city policy. And here's why that is. They determined they can't make this finding because it would convert a single residential unit to a non-residential use, and there's a housing shortage, which I guess came into effect since January of 2016, when the city started approving these projects and making that finding. If you apply this standard consistently, the city's going to have to, I mean, if that's true, if we cannot convert even one residential unit to a commercial use or a non-residential use, and we do it consistently, we're going to have to deny any application that proposes to do that, not just short-term rental applications. Anybody that wants to convert a residential structure into a non-residential use still has to have that finding made if it's over 1,000 square feet. And if the issue is loss of a residential unit, that's the same for all those uses. So, you know, that was a good question. Are we doing something bigger here? Are we setting a whole new policy for the city here? I hope not, because the city doesn't make community-wide policy decisions on an ad hoc basis in the context of individual projects. That's not how we do planning here. That's what the opponents of this project are actually asking you to do and are going to ask you to do. But that's the standard. If the HLC's finding is upheld, and that is the new standard for sound community planning, we've created a freeze 100% on the conversion of residential uses. And if you go and say, "Well, maybe other commercial uses are okay, but just not short-term rentals," can't convert it to that. Well, that's a permitted use under the current zoning, and that's a much bigger problem. And if the city council does that, what you're doing is effectively banning short-term rentals, which I've heard the city say over and over again, they're not doing. So, I just think, you know, we've got a general plan. We've got a zoning ordinance. We took forever to come up with those things, and we have a big community investment in them, and people have a right to rely on them. And let's not change community policy in the context of an individual project here, which is exactly what the HLC did, and we're hoping that you'll reverse that. So, that concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you. You have 4 minutes and 48 seconds left for after-public comment. Any questions? Mr. Dominguez?
So, you emphasize that this is only one unit, and if this was 50 units, would you say the result could be different? Or do you see it the same, whether it's 50 units or one unit?
Madam Chair.
In terms of the sound community planning, whether this would be part of sound community planning, whether it's 50 or one units?
I think that the council needs to look at whether the conversion of any units is allowed or not allowed, and not just the conversion to a short-term rental or not. If you, as a council, determine that even one unit cannot be converted from residential use to another use, you have to apply that same standard to every proposal. You can't just say-
Right, but that's not answering my question.
Okay, then my answer is this.
When you say "even one unit," you're emphasizing that you should let this one slide, because it's only one unit. What difference does it make?
I believe that-
So, the question is, where do you draw the line? Is two units just two units, or...
Okay, Madam Chair, Councilmember Dominguez, I don't draw a line. Okay? I think that's up to your council and decision-making boards to draw. I think if somebody comes in with a project to convert 100 units at one time, that's a different issue than individual projects that might convert one at a time, even if they might add up to 100 over time. I think a project of that level is a lot different than a project of this level, and that's why our zoning ordinance exempts projects of one unit. It looks at them categorically as something that can happen a lot of times, but it's such a small increment that it's not going to have a big impact on the community as a whole. Or if somebody wants to convert a couple 100 units-
Well, the follow-up then is, what's the difference between 100 single units versus one 100-unit complex in terms of the impact on the city?
The difference is that your adopted general plan and zoning ordinance allow for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Ternchak.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and city council members. I want to start just with addressing Mayor Schneider's question about the square footage. I also wasn't involved in the project at that point. I got involved right before HLC. My understanding is, the project was approved at 1,000 square feet. The approved building plans show that it's 1,000 square feet. When Mr. Catanha was told that he had to go through a hotel conversion process to formalize his short-term rental, he consulted with city staff over many months. During one of those consultations, somebody at the counter pulled out a ruler, not even a scale, and decided it was 1,007 square feet, and he would need a development plan. And no amount of arguing in another direction changed that. So, while, yes, technically, the application from the applicant says it was 1,007 square feet, that's not something that was produced by the applicant. That's something that staff was insistent on. So, anyway, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Eva Ternchak. I'm representing Dan Catanha here. He's the property owner at 101 West Annapamoo Street. And a lot has been said already, and I see you have a big stack of pink slips in front of you, so I'm going to try and be brief and just kind of hit the highlights from our standpoint. The basics, this property is zoned for commercial. It's in a commercial zone. It's been operating as a short-term rental since 2010 with a business license, paying TOT, never had a complaint, never had an issue. For these reasons, from my standpoint, from a planning perspective, this is an ideal place for a short-term rental. If you want to look at sound community planning, you know, Jarrett spoke about it at length. You have a general plan. You have a zoning ordinance. You have community findings that you need to make, and this hits all of them. HLC disagreed and made the finding that this wasn't consistent with sound community planning because of our housing shortage. As a result, today, you're likely to hear a lot of comments about housing shortage and the pros and cons of short-term rentals in general. And given that both of these topics are highly charged and highly emotional, regardless of what side of the debate you are on either one, you're going to, some of those are going to resonate with you, and that's fine. But really, at the end of the day, the issue in front of your council is not about housing or short-term rentals. The issue in front of your council is one of process and transparency and fairness. Before you today, you have a property owner that has done his best to comply with your rules. He got a business license. He paid his TOT. The city accepted that TOT for years, never once insinuating that he might be doing something illegal. And then, you adopted a process requiring him to convert to a hotel. He did that. He did his research. He worked with your staff. He spent months doing that. He submitted an application, paid his permit fees, and after going through all of that, in a six-o denial, HLC said, "We can't approve one of these." So, here's a question. Housing is a complex issue, and while some argue that short-term rentals take housing away, others argue that short-term rentals help people pay their mortgages. In very different scenarios, I know of at least six different ways that people are doing that. But the fact is, at the end of the day, the housing shortage existed well before STRs became a thing. It existed when you adopted your NGMO. It existed when you confirmed that the process for a short-term rental would be a hotel conversion. And short-term rentals did not create our housing crisis, and frankly, banning them is not going to solve them. So, we hope that you will see the merits of this application. We hope that you will look at the arguments that your staff has given you for how you can make this finding, and we hope that you will reverse HLC's decision and approve this project. At this point, Mr. Catanha does want to come up and say a few things?
Why don't you let him finish his presentation?
Just for you, you started out by saying that the applicant entered the number 1,007 into the application and signed it, but was forced to do so by staff? I wanted to make sure-
Well, I wouldn't say forced to do so. Basically, he was told, "You have to do a development plan." They weren't going to accept it. They weren't going to process it as a zoning clearance, so he had no other option at that point. You can't appeal a determination made at the counter.
So, but the applicant did write the number in and sign it?
I don't, I'm-
Why don't we let him-
Somebody-
Okay, well, she's telling the story. Someone asked-
Mr. Catanha. I'll continue the clock now.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and city council members. I'm the owner of today's subject property at 101 West Annapamoo. Over the last seven years, I've made extraordinary efforts to comply with all of the rules set forth by the city. I've obtained all the proper permits, as Eva explained, licenses, paid my TOT, which the city readily accepted, and never had a complaint from any neighbors or tenants of any kind. Since 2010, I never heard once from the city staff that I was not complying with all of the rules. All of the sudden, the rules arbitrarily changed, and I was told I had to convert my single fourth-floor apartment to a hotel. I spent months and thousands of dollars working with the city staff to figure out this process, to make sure I was doing it all properly and correctly. On April 19th, I was denied by the Historical Landmark Commission because, in their opinion, approving even one short-term rental would not be found consistent with sound community planning. And it really begs the question, if this is the case, why provide a conversion process for people like me to go through? Why would you do that if they're automatically going to be denied if not one project can be approved? Further in that hearing, the HLC indulged our opponents for as long as our opponents wanted to speak, and when I and Eva asked to speak, we were denied to speak. This is not due process. As your constituent, I feel betrayed. I hope the city council takes this opportunity to make this situation right and bases it on the facts. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Mario, did you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. Is it Cataneo? Is that how you say your name, sir?
Catanha, why don't you come on up?
Or, thank you. So, what, was it a long-term apartment before 2010?
It was just an approved regular apartment unit when the building was constructed.
And when was it constructed, sir?
I believe 1978, somewhere around there.
And why don't you want it to be an apartment, a long-term apartment? Or why do you want it to be a short-term?
Because it's not going to solve any of the city's issues for what they're talking about, because it's, I would be renting that unit out somewhere between $4,000 and $5,000 per month.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Dominguez?
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Dominguez.
I just want to repeat the question. Did you sign an application where you avowed that it was 1,007 feet?
No.
Can you explain?
No, I can't explain that.
So, are you telling us today that that number didn't come from you?
That number came from an independent, I'm not sure what the proper term is, but it didn't come from me.
Did you give that number to the city?
During this process, yes. I felt that I should be honest and give the number that I was given to the city.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. There's 13 minutes, 56 seconds for that appellate. Did you have any other comments? Go right ahead. So, I'll start the clock again.
I just want to, just to be clear, I think somebody, I think perhaps when we spoke with you, Mayor, we discussed the square footage. So, just to be clear, that's not one of our appeal issues. At some point in the process, a determination was made that that wasn't worth fighting and that they would go through the process. So, our appeal is on the reasoning used to make the finding. We're not here to argue about 7 square feet at this point, just to be clear.
Thank you. All right. So, now you have 13 minutes and 29 seconds. I brought it up because if it was under 1,000, there'd be no process, so that's a whole other part. Before we get to public comment, can I, I just want to, and I want to ask our HLC member to come on up. Thank you, Mr. Gumbine, for being here. I know you were told that we started later than we actually did. So, we were actually, what a thought, right?
Had a schedule, yeah.
But if you'd like to give your comments at this point, that would be helpful.
Sure, absolutely. So, I'm here on behalf of HLC to kind of give our take on what we, a tough situation that we really don't like being in. We'd much rather talk nerdy historic architecture than this topic, than one unit. But the main-
But our, the main, and I think this has been a development over the last, you know, six months, especially with, especially with both the AUDs and the ADUs. As everyone knows, those are, have been contentious issues that have been coming up, one from the state side, one from the cities, and it has made for, for HLC, it has been sort of one clear directive of what we're trying to do is get housing, so we're going to make these other, the city has decided to make other exceptions, and we're going to try to work it into the language of historic architecture and the neighborhoods and everything to get to fit, and we want everyone to be able to build and it to be a great city in the end. So we're very much stuck in that, kind of between a rock and a hard place, and with, especially with this example. So yes, it's probably about, it's about as small and it's about as, barely crossed the line as possible with just over 1,000 square foot and one unit. But we really have, did feel that, that all the discussion of needing to get residential for Santa Barbara and all the, every project that we see, especially that are, that's the AUD and the ADUs that we don't see, because they're not, they don't go and come in front of us, and they could be sticking something on a great historic building that we won't be able to do anything about or even give any input on. So between those state and the, and city programs, resident, you know, the keeping of Santa Barbara's residents and building of that stockpile is the, is the kind of the main, everyone's main goal. So with that, that was why we really couldn't make those findings. And we really, it was, it was a struggle, I know, with a number of, a number of commissioners, and we really don't like to do that, and we don't, yeah, but at the end of the day, it's not up to us. We're trying to just apply things that have been given to us, and the principles that are given to us with both the ADUs and the AUDs, as those are being the goals of the city, so.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, the appellant has a, or rather, the applicant here, I guess is the right way word, said they didn't have a chance to talk freely before the HLC. Do you recall that?
I'm not, if I remember vaguely, and there's a video of it, so, but usually that happens if there's an out-of-sequence thing where there's, everyone has to have their due process and their turn, their speaker slip and their turn, and after the presentation, there's the time for questions, and I think that was just a regular procedural thing. I could be wrong, but as far as I remember, there wasn't anything out of the ordinary. It was just a matter of procedurally not, and that happens, you know, almost every meeting. Someone tries to speak and they're not allowed to, and they're told, "No, not right now." And so, but I don't know, we can watch the video, but that's the first time I've heard of that, so.
Okay. Secondly, council and city has tried to accommodate people in certain zones that want to convert to single, short-term rental. Were you aware of that process?
What do you, is there something in particular you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying that the policy of the city has been that where it's legitimate, R4 and some other zones, if somebody wants to convert, they're allowed to come forward. It's a difficult process, but there is a means for them to convert to short-term rentals.
I don't know how clear and how much sort of background that we were given in terms of, by staff, to explain that this is totally normal. For us, it was a fairly out-of-the-ordinary thing for it to be reviewing, and it was also based on fairly recent developments with the ADU and AUD as being an issue. This hasn't been really a big issue until last year to two years with this level of exceptions that we're kind of being told to make for these things.
So your focus had been on the AUD and the ADUs, but just to go back, you weren't thinking in terms of, yeah, the city does allow short-term rentals in certain areas?
Oh, we know that the city does allow short-term rentals. It's the question right now of trying to get as much residences as, residential as possible, workforce housing, you know, make it affordable housing, how is it going to happen? And all that has been a constant conversation that we've been being, trying to listen to as people are trying to do all these things, and we're trying to just adjust it to meet historic guidelines. But those directives of, "We need housing, we need housing, we need housing," that's what has been constant, you know, has been a continuous stream that we've been trying to accept as much as possible, because, you know, even when we don't like it, we know that that needs to happen for the city's sake. So that's been kind of the process and the mindset if there's, and that says, "Well, we feel like we shouldn't be stepping outside of our purview. We're just trying to, we're trying to apply what we understand the city's rules to be for it, and if someone else wants to, if things get appealed and they go over our head, that's why there's you all." And we're just trying to apply what we understand the city wants.
So this may be an unfair question, but based on the decision that you made regarding this project, would you have to make the same decision on any project that came up?
I don't know. I mean, one thing right away makes me think of like sort of the oak tree scenario where, you know, if you're going to get rid of an oak tree, you have to, you know, supply 10 more, or things like that where there's an exchange. I could see scenarios where people do take out housing and convert in one part of the project, and maybe they end up with a net gain, because they rework part of the other property or the other parcel and have more density or whatever. I could see the number game being a way of getting, you know, a way of, as long as a net gain is more residences, it being more of an approvable thing. That's off the cuff, that's my personal opinion, but I could see that being a good argument for why we can accept this. And as, even though we had giant Xs on HLC stuff up here, we aren't actually, we're not actually that mean, and we don't want to stop everyone. We actually really want things to work, and our main concern is just trying to apply the good historic rules that the city currently has to development, so.
So, but that would be direction, that would be a policy direction, correct? I ask a rhetorical question. It would be a policy direction, and I think that has to come from the City Council.
That's right, exactly. So we're, we are really just trying to, you know, not make rules. We're just trying to, trying to apply things.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse has a question.
Mr. Gumbine had a question for you, if you would. Thank you for taking your time to come down here.
Yeah.
To all this. You mentioned before that this was a little unusual for you. I've been thinking about the rubric of findings that you have for projects as they come before your board, and this determination seems like it's got more of a land use power to it than it does an aesthetic or what you would normally deal with. Is that, is that fair to say?
That's right, exactly. We'd much rather talk corbels and mullions and belexion moldings and things like that.
So I'm just, and this is why I remain the most confused person up here during this whole hearing, because the findings that you guys had to make, and you made them irremediously, but it seemed like it's a little out of the normal scope for HLC. Is that a fair statement?
I think that's probably fair, and I think that that's probably born of the last, you know, six months to a year of trying to apply things, try to apply the mindset of, we're not going, they don't have to have as much parking because of the X reason. There are other things that, height-wise, they get to go taller because of, we need the housing. All these things that we might not find are the, we're trying to shift our mindset so that they're acceptable, or how we can get them to be acceptable based on the city's need. So then, when that same mindset gets turned to, "Well, we're just going to take one thing, we're going to flip it over, we're going to do it just minus one there," and that flips over to that, then it also means like, well, our compatibility findings, normally, yes, it involves how things look, mass, bulk scale, details, all that kind of stuff, but it also involves compatibility to neighborhoods and to the feel of the city, both big and little picture. And so it's that that we got kind of hung up on or stuck on, because everything that we've been sort of targeting along the way, the last six months especially, has been looking at it totally differently.
So even though the housing balance could very well be out of the, out of the purview of the HLC zone, the EPV and all that. So do you feel that you have been, as a body, been retasked, or is it just something you're kind of trying to go along with what everybody's trying to do?
No, I think that, I don't, and this is just speaking for myself, and I've only been on there one year and a couple of months, so I'm not the greenest one on there. So, and I'm here speaking to you, so.
Maybe that's why you're the one here.
Yeah, sucker. There's a giant target on my back right here.
Just making.
Sucker. Yeah, thanks, thanks, Chair Lavoy. You couldn't make it. So, yeah. So, yeah, so as far, as far as my understanding of the last year and a half has been, that there has been a steady kind of tightening of focus on this, the subject, and trying to get everything to work. And I know there's other things too. It's not just ADU and AUD. There's other thoughts going on in the city right now with other things, and how do we solve these problems, and how do we solve them well and keep Santa Barbara beautiful? So we're very much like, have that in our focus, and, yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you for those answers. I appreciate that.
One more, Ms. Mario.
I have a question for our city planner, Madam Mayor, or a couple of questions.
So thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm done.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Ms. Mario.
So, Ms. Brooke, Mr. Garrett said that if we, how did he say it? So that if we, in terms of converting residential to non-residential, that we would have to adopt this rule for everything changing residential to non-residential, is that true? So he gave some examples of residential going to office space or architect's office, and...
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mario, I don't believe that an action on one project demands that they make the same action on every other project, because each project has its own issues, constraints, benefits, and their discretionary actions, I mean, in the term, you use discretion when we have to make these findings. And so the HLC, the ABR, PC, all the decision-making bodies that make discretionary actions use their discretion in making findings, and it's not that you do, you take one action on this project that you must take the same action on even similar projects going forward.
Okay, so that's case by case. But I mean, if we made a policy that said, "We do not want any residential properties converted to short-term rentals," that we, that we would have to say, "Nothing could be converted after that." That was his, one of his arguments. Mr. Goran, sorry.
That was his argument, I believe, because it results in the loss of a unit. So unless there is something in particular with short-term rentals that makes that finding, makes a decision-maker unable to make that finding that doesn't apply to even the demolition, someone could come into the building department tomorrow and ask to demolish your residential unit, and it's a completely ministerial action. So there are other mechanisms that cause the loss of units that don't even make it to a decision-maker. So it could be a conversion to a short-term rental, it could be that a unit's demolished and an office building is put in its place, but that's discretion that the decision-makers need to use.
We do, we don't have a policy now to preserve residential units, just in general, where we say?
We have housing element policies that speak to preservation of units. We have a condominium conversion ordinance that lays out a lot of requirements in order to convert rental units to condominiums. The hotel conversions are subject to many of the same requirements. So it's, while we have policies to preserve and develop new housing, we do also have requirements for their conversion away from those uses too. So, yes, there is a process and they are allowed in certain zones. We also have policies that say we should preserve housing to the extent possible, primarily affordable housing, subsidized housing, but all housing. As you saw in the quantified objectives, we anticipate mostly above moderate-income housing to be produced over the next six years from now.
And we had a discussion today about a single unit changing. So if there's a house, a home, a house in the R4, and it was proposed to convert from residential to short-term rental, would that be considered one unit, a single unit? It doesn't matter what the bedroom count is, it's?
Yes, correct. If it's going to be operated as a unit and it's configured where it looks as though it would be rented as one unit, we would count it as one.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll have a question for after public comment, but just to tee it up, Mr. Goran's issue about the exemption for that one item, so, unless, yeah, so just be prepared for that. So with that, we will go to public comment. So we will start with Joseph Liebman, and you have a number of people who are willing to donate their time, I want to make sure that they're here. Is Hani Iswani here? Thank you. Pat Keigho, John Wesley, and Bryce Anderson. Thank you. So, Mr. Liebman, you have up to 10 minutes, and then you'll be followed by Jose Arturo Gallegos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, City Council members. My name is Joseph Liebman. I'm an attorney. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I have sued the city with some success on regulatory takings over the last few years. This is an issue that interests me greatly, and I'm going to look at it a little differently. What I want council to focus on is that by the actual language of the municipal code, there is no conversion here. Nothing is being changed from residential to anything else. What do I mean by that? A project creating a condominium hotel or similar use and using no more than one existing dwelling unit as part of said project shall not be considered a conversion. What does that mean? That's telling us lawyers and the judges and anyone else who cares to interpret the city's municipal code that nothing is being converted when you're talking about one unit. So all of this talk today about this particular unit being converted, it's a dog and tomorrow it's a cat, that's not what's happening here. It was a home yesterday, it's going to be a home tomorrow. It was a residential unit yesterday, it's going to be a residential unit tomorrow. I'm not saying that that's the way it should be. I'm suggesting that's what the city, in its policy and its laws, is providing. And according to the municipal code, you folks are vested with upholding the law, and you must apply it equitably and fairly. So the gentleman before you is not coming before you and saying, "I want to convert something." He's saying, "I want you to comply with the law as you wrote it." That's point number one. Point number two, if you look at, right under the heading, "exceptions to Requirements for Conversion Permits," and then it goes, it reads, "The following shall be exempt from the provisions of this chapter." What chapter are we talking about? We're talking about Chapter 28.88. That's the chapter that deals with conversions. And in that chapter is set forth a list of requirements that must be met if one wants to convert. Come back to what I said earlier, we're not converting here. We fall within the one exception that Santa Barbara allows. So if we're not converting, we don't need a development plan. And why don't we need a development plan? Because if you turn to 28.88.055, that tells you that you need a development plan for conversions to hotels or similar uses. But we're exempt from that requirement. Why are we exempt? Because you wrote that we're exempt. Why are we not converting? Because you wrote that we're not converting. So what I'm asking the City Council to do here is to follow the law as written, not to get distracted by this bigger argument about policies of losing housing stock, gaining housing stock, whether 500 units would be subjected to the same laws. In answer to an earlier question, if someone came before you and was applying for 100-unit conversion, would that be the same as a one-unit conversion? Absolutely not. All you have to do is read the law. So if I'm coming to you today and telling you that I want to convert 100 units from a home to a single family, or to a short-term rental, do any of you feel I fit within that one-unit conversion? Of course not. So the result would be dramatically different, the requirements would be dramatically different. Forget about all of this political discussion, though, about housing shortages. It just doesn't matter with regard to the issues before you today. As an attorney, I will tell you that I view the words in the law very, very carefully. And I will tell you as well that judges do too. We are, we are students of language. All of this discussion, politics and so on, that's very interesting. It's a sideshow. You are bound to uphold the law as written, and I would suggest that it would be fair and appropriate and equitable to do so here. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Arturo Gallegos will be followed by William Corbin.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, well, first of all, I'm not an attorney. I'm just... I'm just an everyday, average Joe. First of all, there's a difference between many old Victorian houses have been turned into businesses. Law firms, architecture firms, beauty salons, photography studios, they've been around forever. No one's had a problem. I never paid too much attention. They've been around for years, you know, a lot more than 30 days. But I oppose these short-term hotel conversions. And this gentleman here, this attorney, says it's not a conversion. In many residential areas, it's going to, you know, affect parking and wild parties. I've heard complaints about that. And I'm just totally against it. I'm just saying no to these hotel conversions. Community comes first. The people who reside here, they come first. And that's the way I see it. So, and that's it.
Thank you. William Corbin will be followed by Adam Brown.
The attorney who just preceded me made this a simple argument that you should not oppose a single-unit conversion, and this potentially looks like a clear, simple, excuse me, conversion. But I just want to alert you to the fact that there are also other denials at the ABR level that are going to come your way, that have already occurred. So this isn't the first you're going to see. And what you do is going to set the precedent in many ways for what comes next. And they're all not straightforward. For instance, my neighbor operates two three-bedroom homes on a single lot and rents them as a, effectively a convention center constantly. And I understand, sorry, I need some water, but I understand also that operating illegal units to date since January 1st is illegal. Whether you're applying for a conversion or not, you can't be doing it today. But they have continually rented these units and have completely disregarded the law. And also, in the center city, parking is at a premium. On-street parking is in a premium. Many of the neighborhoods have older homes that don't have parking or underparked, and they have many, many people living in a lot of these dense neighborhoods in and around the center city. And on-street parking is precious. And when you have homes being converted for tourist use, it's displacing long-term community residents, but it's also disrupting the parking that those long-term residents rely on.
Thank you. Adam Brown will be followed by Tiffany Haller.
Hello, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. My family's lived in Santa Barbara since 1960, when my father moved here to be a professor at the university. And my family's lived here since then. They purchased a duplex on West Beach over 30 years ago. It was rented out long-term. Now my father's passed seven years ago. My mother's 87. She needs more help. I moved back into town and displaced my tenants. I gave them the proper notice, and they moved out. I even let them know, knew what my plans were, which was to move into one of the units and have the other available for visiting family members and friends to see my mother. And then when it's not being used, to use it as a short-term vacation rental in West Beach, in the R4 hospitality zone, to make more money to help take care of my mother in her age. And it's provided, when I was able to do it, I was able to provide something very worthwhile for the community with the people coming in. The STRs are such an important part of our economy and will continue to be. They offer accommodations for families that normally would not come to Santa Barbara because hotels are not an option for these type of vacationers. And we want these vacationers here. It's part of sound community planning, and I think that's what this is about. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Haller, and just one, Sherry and Perry, is that Sherry or Perry here? No? Okay.
There's Sherry.
So there you are. Thank you. Is that Jerry? I had Sherry and Perry, and Jerry. Okay, Sherry, Perry, there's Jerry. Thank you. And Angela O'Neilan? Okay, so you have up to six minutes.
Okay.
There you go. And then you'll be followed by Samantha Ireland.
Okay. Good afternoon, councilmembers and mayor. We are here in support of this owner and to show you how arbitrary interpretations and double standards really go nowhere. So here we are, two years later. You listened to how the city attorney and the planning staff told you that there was something on the books for our properties, and, well, guess what? It's not working. If it was, if it was working, I wouldn't be here right now, and I wouldn't be standing in front of you two years later telling you that the same property that I came to you with two years ago is still in process. I can, I have a letter from the Coastal Commission, and they just recently wrote that the city's actually failing to follow the LCP and is against the city of Santa Barbara's practice for calling these hotels. To quote Councilmember White recently, he said that, "Is there a nimbler way for the R4 owners to get through the permitting process?" To quote Mayor Schneider, we said, she said that, "We thought there was a process that was relatively an easy process for R4, and we're now finding out that it's not. Is there a way to make this easier?" Councilmember Maria said, "Can the legal zones get relief on enforcement because they are having such a hard time getting permits under the hotel conversion process?" Councilmember Hotchkiss, you had said, "There are, these aren't residences, and they're not hotels. Maybe we need to take a challenge of developing a new ordinance to address these." City Attorney Cologne said, "There is no legal problem with not calling them hotels," and that city staff could definitely go down that route and not call them hotels. City Planner Renee Brook herself even told all of you that, "We implemented an ordinance that never envisioned vacation rentals. Staff had for some time been proposing to council to amend the ordinance to develop vacation rental regulations, and we were directed by council not to. So now we are using the hotel definition." So if you remember, in January, a few of us realtors met with each of you, and we tried to tell you that one unit was exempt. Well, you sent us back to the planning staff, and they handed us the vacation rental process for one unit. Our group ended up paying tens of thousands of dollars to have an attorney battle it out with the city attorney to prove that one unit really is exempt, and that's why we're here. This property owner is one unit, whatever the square footage is, I don't know. So why is this owner even here with an appeal? I don't understand. This is one unit. It is exempt, as far as I'm concerned. I have plenty of research and property files to show that other hotels operate under the one, even hotels operate under the one-unit exemption rule. Is this what we need to do? We have to scream from the mountaintops, and no one seems to hear us? This arbitrary interpretation and double standard of our properties as hotels, we don't want them to be called hotels. They aren't hotels. And there's also this dash of double standards. You want to know how? Let me just share with you this story. So around the same time that we started vacation renting our properties in the legal zones, we had a friend that decided to do a bed and breakfast. I asked him, "Hey, so let me show, show me your hotel conversion certificate for your bed and breakfast." And he looked at me like I was crazy. I said, "Well, you're under the definition of, you know, hotel. You're a bed and breakfast. In fact, it says bed and breakfast is synonymous with hotel." He said, "I don't, I'm not a hotel." Well, to take it, his property's 11 rooms, serves breakfast, has an alcohol license, and guess what? He's never converted to a hotel. He's in the definition, he's in the municipal code, and he's never had to convert to a hotel. So decided to go down to the city, pulled 23 files of bed and breakfast, and guess what? Not a single one has had to convert to a hotel. So you're saying, city attorney, that our homes that we live in, sometimes half the year, maybe one week a month, maybe for two years straight, we decide we're not going to vacation rent. We want to live in our homes. These are second homes. These owners come sometimes, that we need to convert to hotels, yet maybe a bed and breakfast doesn't need to do it? That's a double standard. That's what this arbitrary interpretation has got us into, and this doesn't sit well. I love this quote, "How many owners that live in their homes half the year can say they live in a hotel?" Or how about this one from a recent guest, "Are they going to make you put, build a lobby? Just because a city attorney and planning staff decided to call our homes hotels does not mean a judge is going to view them as such." You have the power to change this, make this right for these owners. And in the legal zones, you shut it down in the residential zones. These are the legal zones. They have a legal right. They purchase their homes in the legal zone. Just like Councilmember Rouse said this once, "You can't fit a square peg in a round hole. These aren't hotels. It's proof of us being here right now, two years later. Two years later. We're not getting through the process. This owner is not getting through the process. None of us are going to get through the process. It's arbitrary interpretations are just that. They're arbitrary. There's no basis in the law, and without a doubt, it's a government overreach." Thank you.
Samantha Ireland will be followed by Theo Crackey.
Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, thank you for hearing our position today. I'm here today representing homeowners who purchased homes in the R4 in commercial zones for their own use as primary homes, as second homes. But when they purchased that home, they had the legal right to rent it out as a short-term rental. I just want to reiterate the fact, and I know that you've heard it before me, and you're going to hear it after me again, that if there is a section of the municipal code, of the law, of the zoning, that says, there's a section of the city that it's appropriate, it is deemed appropriate for short-term rentals, and there's a process, then you have to allow it, and you have to follow that process. And your process right now says that if one unit wants to rent short-term, they are exempt from having to go through the conversion process. So we're just pointing that out. We've been pointing it out, as Tiffany Haller said, for over two years. There's a lot of inconsistencies in this, and we just want you to stop and hear it, listen to it, and correct it, please. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate your thoughtfulness on this issue.
Theo Crackey will be followed by Sheila Lodge.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, my name's Theo Crackey. It's always a pleasure to get the opportunity to speak with you. I'm the president of Paradise Retreats, World Class Vacation Rentals, employing 24 full-time staff in Santa Barbara. In response to the opponents of this project who are claiming that you're making a choice between houses and hotels, I want to remind you of the counsel report prepared by Dr. Mark Schneep, which concluded that short-term rentals affect 1/10th of 1% of the long-term housing in our area. The main thing the opponents of this project failed to understand is these properties are second homes, which are used throughout the year by the owners and therefore have not been nor ever will be part of our long-term housing supply. Do you know how many of the 27 properties that I manage in the city limits have become long-term rentals since the city's enforcement efforts became effective? Zero. And we've been not taking reservations since January 1st, 2016, because we take reservations up to a year in advance. The prohibition is not working to create housing because our owners use their houses. They're not, it's not a choice to convert long-term or short-term. So anyway, prohibition's not working to create housing. If the City Council votes to support the HLC decision, then they will be effectively banning short-term rentals in all areas of the city of Santa Barbara, and that is confirmation that the city intended all along to ban STRs and not simply enforce an existing zoning rule. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Lodge will be followed by Nina Kiroz.
Afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Sheila Lodge, speaking as a resident. I think there are some bigger issues here. Santa Barbara adopted its first general plan in 1964. Concerns about how Santa Barbara was developing led in 1974 to an effort to determine optimum population for the city. The council decided on a number of 85,000. The zoning, the residential zoning, would have provided for 140,000. The new, the new goal fit within the city's water supplies, its traffic handling capacity, and among other resources. The residential areas were rezoned to provide for that level. There was clearly too much commercial zoning for the lower population level, but that side of the jobs housing balance didn't get addressed until 1989 with Measure E, which was a way of regulating commercial, non-residential development. The policies of Measure E were carried forward in the general plan in 2011, but basically the commercial zoning, the non-residential zoning, remains the same as it was in 1964. As you know, the Downtown Organization recently had a study done of downtown, and one of the conclusions was that there is too much commercial zoning. Then, of course, there's the housing issue. There is no shortage of hotel rooms. There are five new hotels in the pipeline in addition to what we already have. And allowing this unit to legally convert to commercial, non-residential use aggravates both the lack of housing and the surplus of commercial zoning. I urge you to think about this issue and how it can all work together to create the, to reduce the amount of commercial and provide more housing opportunities. So I urge you to uphold the Housing Historic Landmarks Commission. Thank you.
Nina Kiroz will be followed by Joe Rouchon.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I am an Airbnb host who lives on the mesa, and I've been forced to observe the ban. I am complying with the ban, and I'd like to address this afternoon the futility of it because I have a lot of friends who are also hosts. They are not complying with the ban. I can't even go on Facebook without being popped up with $65 right in the heart of downtown, $73 close to shopping beaches downtown. These are all in downtown. The enforcement is very sketchy, and here's why. Here's what you do. If you're an Airbnb host like me who rents out a master bedroom in your home that you live in, you simply go in the middle of the night, change your minimum stay from 30 days to two, or whatever you want. And if you're a vacation rental operator who works in the industry with whole, entire houses, you simply take that 30 days and you subdivide it into five parties renting for six days a night. And you will never know that they're doing this. These are my friends at Corpower. There's people sitting in this audience who are doing it. You have no control over enforcing this ban any more than you have control over the internet. You also can't control competing platforms from popping up a new Airbnb. We've got VRBO, we've got HomeAway, we've got Airbnb. You can have another 100 of these popping up under your nose, and you will never know. You got, so you're shooting yourself in the financial foot three times here. You're paying money to enforce a ban that's futile by what I've just said. You're also forfeiting a lot of TOT tax and TBID from the people who were complying and who had permits, like I did. And you're also forfeiting an awful lot of money that would be spent by this huge class of guests that I... When I was an Airbnb host for 18 months, the vast majority were millennials, and by far, they are the, they only do Airbnb. You're going to be forfeiting all the business you'd be getting from this huge class of people. So you're spending a lot of money on a ban that simply can't be enforced.
Thank you.
Please keep your minds open.
Joe Rouchon? And then is Christine Neuhauser?
Can you put back up the last thing that was there about the conversion ordinance?
The conversion, what was, right there? Okay.
There it is.
Okay. So, Mr. Ruschon, you have up to four minutes, and then Lindsey Baker will be after you. Go ahead.
Her attorney was up here to make the point, I can't remember names or anything else, that this ordinance exempted the unit from conversion. Well, there's some selective interpretation going on here. Let's take a look at the last paragraph. It says, "No exception under the subsection shall affect the applicability of the zoning ordinance, blah, 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 or other ordinances and regulations." That means that there's another, other regulation that we're, that is applicable here is the growth management plan. But I wanted to point that out. Let me do my spiel now. Staff report asks, "What should be considered when evaluating a project for consistency with sound community planning?" They answer the question by noting that it is the city's general plan and its housing element, which is a reasonable standard for review. The reason that we're ahead of schedule on our, meeting our housing production goals, and that increments of loss of this one unit is balanced out over time by additional units. Loss of this one housing unit, in the long run, is no big deal. But I understood the main thrust of the housing element is the creation and preservation of diversified housing, not, where was, not the rationale for eliminating units. Staff also cites adaptive management program, but to my knowledge, no such evaluation of the effects of hotel conversions has yet been undertaken. Sure, there's only one unit involved here, but it lost, if lost, but it's lost to conversion, the loss is as significant as if it burned down. No matter how you spin it, the loss of the unit is counterproductive to the housing element's purposes, which is to create and preserve housing. The point is made that the converted unit will find itself in an appropriate commercial mixed-use zone, and that it's surrounded by commercially zoned properties. If you look at the site, except for the nameplates over the doors, you can't tell what use these, this staid, nondescript building is being put to. A commercial building with a penthouse apartment on top certainly raises no incompatibility issues. The zoning is a technical non-issue in this case, in my opinion. Appellant argues that if no sound planning findings can be made in this project, then logic dictates that no other conversion of any other R4 use can be found to be consistent. This is no more true than the corollary that if this project is approved based on the same criteria, logic would dictate that the ones after it would similarly have to be approved. Both propositions are based on equally flawed logic. Yes, the appellant asked, "Why was the conversion ordinance created if not to grease the skids for conversions?" Well, the converter ordinance was created, correct me if my memory doesn't serve me, but it was in order to regulate and limit non-residential development, not to encourage I think I've covered everything here. I'm getting more confused as the years go by. Okay, yeah, I just suggest that in interpreting of regulations, you have to look at what the purpose of them is, and using the housing element and the growth management plan as rationale for conversions is, doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsey Baker, and then Roberto Diostano.
Mayor Schneider, City Council Persons, Lindsey Baker, speaking for the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters urges the council to deny the appeal of the decision of the Historic Landmarks Commission regarding a proposed change of use for a residential unit at 101 West Annapamou Street. Among our organization's adopted policy positions is supportive of balance between residential needs and commercial development in Santa Barbara and the South Coast. The situation with rental housing in the city is commonly and corrected, correctly referred to as a crisis. Given that, how can the city endorse, at this time, any change of use for a rental unit from residential to hotel, single, short-term rental? Possible easing of the crisis with future projects does not justify making the situation worse now. We recognize that we are dealing with only a single unit in this application, but single units mount up and a precedent becomes established. The League believes the city's workforce should have access to a reasonable supply of local housing. The all-important principles of sound community planning include efforts towards the goal and lead us to ask you to deny this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Roberto Diostano, and then Anna Marie Gott. Is Roberto here? No? Okay. Anna Marie Gott, you'll be the final speaker. You have some people who are waiving their time. Is Doug Taylor here? No? Neil Hooker? Are you Mr. Hooker? Okay. Natasha Totarovic, there you are, and Natalia Giavani. Okay, so you have up to eight minutes, Ms. Gott.
Okay, thank you.
And you'll be the final public speaker.
Okay. Roberto and Doug had to leave. They couldn't stick around as long as everyone else here did today. You know, let me start by saying the one thing. You saw a list of properties that were approved by ABR. I don't know if you read the email that I sent, and I don't know if you read the email that Allied sent regarding the development plan approval findings. Those findings should have been made before any of this started, but they weren't. They were not made at the beginning of the project. Further, if you saw that list, Ana Cappa, you know, Bass Street, there was another one for Ortega, you know, it wasn't until March 30th of this year that your attorney's office had to work with Jaime Lamone to create a DPA memo that was sent to the ABR and the HLC. Because guess what? They did not know that they were supposed to make the findings. Those other projects, they never went up to the full board. They were actually on consent. They should have all been made at the full board, and who should have been making the finding? The Board of the ABR and the Board of the HLC. But you know what was happening? Staff put a piece of paper in front of them and said, "We believe that we can be consistent with the principles of sound community planning, and here's why." It was a recommendation, just like all of the other recommendations, but they didn't take into consideration what is actually happening in Santa Barbara. You know, they actually, once they got the memo, once we started asking them the questions, "Can you make this finding?", they said no. They couldn't make it, because these are the things that they took into consideration. They took into consideration that we have 800-plus units that are available for tourists that have been completely taken off the market. We have less than a 1% vacancy rate. We have a 24% average vacancy rate for hotels for the last four years. Our residents cannot find housings. We have apartment buildings that have been almost completely converted into tourist accommodations, but our workers, our residents, the doctors, the firemen, the teachers, the people that wait on you when you go to a restaurant, and the people that are in your office buildings cannot find housing. They are paying more for housing. That means that they have less disposable income. The reason that they have less disposable income is because we've got the short-term vacation rentals that are sucking up just that 800. Just that 800 units equals 3.86% of our residential housing stock. That is how much it represents. And when you take that amount of housing out of the market, it affects everyone, because everyone's rents goes up. It's, you've heard it from Mr. Cologne. He was in here the night of the tenants' ordinance meeting for tenants' rights, and he was giving you all of this information. So, you know, let's also, you know, talk about the DPA. The DPA finding that you have to actually make is, is it consistent with the principles of sound community planning to convert this unit into permanent use? That's what it's going to be as a commercial unit. It's moving from residential to commercial, because that is how it is defined. They are collecting tax. The people are staying there for less than 30 days. These are not long-term rentals. These are short-term, and people pay with a credit card. They're collecting tax, but it doesn't, it doesn't pay the city enough to actually allow all of this, all of these units to be converted into permanent use as hotels, because that's basically what is going to happen. And guess what? You're right. Joe actually had you read that one section about the exemption. Guess what that also means? That means that an unlimited number of units can be converted annually, unlimited. The vast majority of these people that want to turn units into permanent use as hotels, they're single units. Single units. And they have purchased them, in many cases, just to turn them into permanent use as hotels slash short-term vacation rentals. I don't care what you want to call it, but they are eating into the housing stock by purchasing these units to be permanently used for short-term vacation rentals. That affects everyone in the city. It affects the rent. It affects how much they have in disposable income, and it affects parking. And you heard Bill talk about the unit that he has right next to him. Two separate, three-bedroom houses. And guess what? Just like a few other people that have gone through this hotel conversion process, two units on the property, but they're only trying to convert one unit, because that is the easiest thing to do. So, how many people are going to try to do it? You guys already know that there have been people that have done it. You already know that you've got illegal, short-term vacation rentals in the AUD, but we can't get them shut down. And guess what? The Ableton House? The Ableton House was under 1,000 square feet. Do you know how many days it took to convert? Four working days. Four. We have 8,900 units in the R4 in the commercial zone. 8,900. How many other units are just like this that can be converted in four days? Well, we've got one up on Shippola that was converted in seven, and you already know she's renting out the other unit as an illegal, short-term vacation rental. So, again, how many other applications are going to be out there just like this? You guys need to make a decision, and that decision will apply to this project, but it will also give the boards, you know, an idea of where you guys value housing. Housing is critical to your businesses that operate here, and yeah, you know what? Tourists are now coming, and they're living on the weekends in the units that your residents used to live on, live in. And yeah, you know what? They're going to go to a restaurant, they're going to pay some extra, you know, sales tax, but they, we don't have a study that doesn't say that they wouldn't have gone to a hotel. There isn't one out there that says that. You know, and let's think about this. When your 2011 general plan was adopted, there wasn't a word mentioned about short-term vacation rentals, not one. Do you know that by the time you adopted the general plan, there were 159 business licenses that had been issued to people that had short-term vacation rentals? 159. By the time you guys actually, in 2015, decided that you were not going to permit short-term vacation rentals, there were 418. This plan that the city, that you guys are looking at, that there was no consideration about investors or commercial hosts, and they're eating up our housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, Mr. Goran, you still have 4 minutes and 48 seconds. If you'd like to take any of that time, now is your chance. Let me just get the, there we go.
4 minutes, 48 seconds. Madam Mayor, members of the council, 8,900 units, that sounds like a lot. That's, that's a scary number. Are 100% of those units going to convert one by one into short-term rentals? I don't think so. I mean, we all took economics, right? Everybody took it in college and high school, and if we have 8,900 units converted to short-term rentals, then we can all look forward to paying $10 a night to stay there. I mean, what a bargain. That's how economics work. Every single unit in the R4 zone isn't going to convert into a short-term rental. In fact, most won't. Most are housing for people that use it as long-term housing. Other people use it intermittently as a short-term rental, because they're allowed to under the zoning ordinance, and other people might do it permanently. The issue is, you all said, and it was all of you here in 2015 when this came up, and you said very clearly, "These were not allowed in the single-family zones," okay? But they would be allowed in the zones that allow that as a use. That's what you said. That's what you told the public. That's what you told everybody who owns property in those zone districts and has an expectation that they can use their property for what the zoning district says it's for. And now, people are asking you to say, "Well, yeah, except for we'll deny every application for this." So, that's really like, that's great. It's like, oh, you're totally allowed to do it, so apply, and we'll deny your application because we find it inconsistent with sound community planning. Okay, that's, that's a ban. That, you should have just said in 2015, "We banned these," and given people a chance to challenge that, instead of saying, "Oh, no, you're allowed, and we're not changing anything, but hey, when you come in, well, you know, we're just going to deny every application." It's like saying, "Look at our awesome, adopted diversity in hiring policy." Like, we have this policy that says we hire people from all genders and races, except for not Hispanics. Every Hispanic that comes in will have a reason why we don't, we find that we can't hire them, okay? That's what this is doing, if we do what the HLC is doing here, and we adopt policy through an individual project. I don't think anybody in this council, when they adopted the NGMP findings, intended for them to be used in this way. With respect to Ms. Brooks' analysis, the issue here wasn't some traffic-specific thing to this project, or that it would affect the character of this specific neighborhood, or, you know, aesthetically, it was a problem, or some reason unique to this project. The issue the HLC denied this project on was the conversion of a housing unit, okay? That's the same issue if you convert that space upstairs into a doctor's office, or any other permitted use under the C2 zone. That issue is the same for every project. The city can't say, "Well, in one case, that's inconsistent with sound community planning, because housing is critical, and we can't lose one unit, except for we can use, lose a unit over here." Doctor's offices that are permitted use is okay, and we're going to permit those, but this other permitted use that you're allowed to do by law in the adopted municipal code, we don't like that one, so we're going to say we can't make the finding in that case. Or you could do that, but I don't think people are going to like where that ends up for the city or anybody else. That's, that's not how we do planning here, or we ever have in the 20-plus years I've been working with you on projects. So, that's everything I have in response. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez has a question for you.
So, there's a lot of issues here, and they overlap a bit, so I just want to see if I can unravel a few of them. So, 28.85, you, what is your thought on that? That does apply to your client? Not 28.80, and I know there's some discussion, but 28.85.
I'm not as good as Scott. I don't have these all memorized. Could you tell me which that is?
Non-residential construction plan.
I beg to differ with the city on that one, but for the purposes of this appeal, that's irrelevant. Let's just stipulate that it applies, and that we're still talking about this finding.
And that it's fine, that it should be at the HLC, because it's in Pueblo Viejo, in a non-residential. I just want to make sure what we agree on, so we can focus on.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, yeah, let's, let's just stipulate that and agree to it. HLC would be the appropriate body to hear a project that legitimately required a development plan. So, if we just say this one required one, yes, it would be at HLC for that. I don't, I don't concede that point, but let's just go ahead and take that one off the table, because it's really not that important.
The reason I ask is, is I was asking you earlier about whether there's a difference between 1 times 100 or 100, and that question was taken out of context to argue about 28.88, right? That 100 would qualify, because it's more than 1. I wanted to make it clear that my comments were strictly related to whether this is a sound community planning, and that question is, is... And that question is, is rightly in the domain of HLC in this case. Whether you agree with their opinion or not is a different story. And then it's, then becomes rightly in our domain. So you're on par then with me in that the HLC did have the right to make a determination one way or another about sound community planning. Because it sounded like the other attorney was saying it shouldn't be at the HLC and they shouldn't have to deal with the sound community planning question.
Is that still a question?
Yeah.
Um, Madam Chair, Councilmember Dominguez, uh, I'm going to say that there, the difference isn't between one and 100, it's between one and two. Okay? Your ordinance says if it is more than one unit, it is subject to the hotel conversion ordinance and that if it is one unit...
I'm not talking about the hotel conversion. I'm talking about 28.85 and making sure we get at the HLC. But I think, I think I understand your answer, that it, it should have been at the HLC. That's fine. But it, I wanted to make sure that the arguments that were made weren't that it shouldn't be at the HLC. So...
I, I think that that's the least important argument in front of you, so I'm not going to keep making that argument.
Well, if you're making it, go ahead and make it. I don't want to put words in your mouth. I want to know, are you making that argument or not? Because that way I can comment on it.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Dominguez...
If you're not making the argument, I'm not going to address it.
I, I'm not going to, um, forego any arguments that we've established in the administrative record, assuming that we may be proceeding to litigation over this. So no, I do not concede that argument. However, just stipulating that argument for the sake of argument, um, let's say that the HLC has the right to make that finding. I think that they failed utterly to provide any evidence or basis in support of that finding.
Right. And I just wanted to focus on that question.
And that's a legal requirement. Yeah, so let's focus on that.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Hart also has a question.
Well, I just, we have had multiple speakers threaten litigation over this issue tonight, today. I wonder if we should adjourn to closed session and talk about that.
Mr. Vincent.
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of council, I, I don't think we're at a, at a point where we need to talk about that at this point. Uh, I think we can proceed to a decision on this hearing and, and make a decision regarding the quasi-judicial, uh, yeah, application before us. Uh, and we'll, we'll, we'll take it there. If, if I think that we're at a place where I cannot advise the council an open session, uh, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Goran. Uh, Mr. Turunchuk, you still have 13 minutes and 29 seconds if you need any of that.
I promise I will not take all of that. Um, okay, so I, I wanted to, Jared did a little bit of it, but I wanted to address, um, Councilmember Maria's question to Ms. Brooke earlier. Um, and, and again, I, I think Jared did a good job with it, but it bears repeating. This project was not denied on a project-specific basis. This project was denied on an overall finding that the conversion of even one unit out of residential use did not constitute sound community planning. If your council upholds that finding, then, again, I'm not an attorney, but I think it's going to be really hard for you to then make that finding for any other project, whether it's a short-term rental or any other conversion out of residential. That's, that's my opinion. So I just want to reiterate, we hope you will consider that. We hope you will reverse HLC's finding. But I do also want to reiterate, this bears repeating, it was in my appeal letter, but I think it's worth noting again. If your council's intent is to not approve even one conversion out of residential, you need to be really clear with your public about that. Because right now you have a process that people go through and enter and spend time and money. And if there's not an approval option at the end of that process, you need to be upfront. You have that discretion. You can say, we're not going to do this, but you need to be upfront with your public on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so it's to the council. I want to go back to Ms. Brooke about the issue of the exemption that was actually brought up quite a bit during the public comment. If you can explain that piece, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the chance to explain. Um, I would like to. So what you heard from many speakers is an argument that this application is exempt from the requirements of Chapter 2888, which is the conversion of dwelling units to condominiums, hotels, or similar uses. And we do agree to that. And I explained in the presentation why. The, um, intent of this ordinance is to establish criteria for the conversion of existing units to condos and hotels to provide protection for the existing tenants in those uses and to also give them the first right of refusal should they want to buy the units for condos. So this ordinance is quite lengthy in the provisions that it has that an applicant needs to adhere to if you're converting more than one unit to either a condo or a hotel. It's explicit in its exemption for one unit on a lot. So that makes this application and others like it exempt from all those requirements asked of applicants who are asking to convert more than one unit to a condominium or a hotel. It does not preclude application of many other, um, sections of the municipal code. Just like when, when we were faced with an application, we looked through the code to see which ordinances apply. Well, these do and these don't, and so we won't apply those. So we did not apply the condo conversion ordinance to this application. We agree with everyone who said that that, this project is exempt from it. But we don't agree that it's exempt from the non-residential growth management program for the very reason there, the definition of a non-residential construction project includes the conversion of existing residential floor area to non-residential use. I don't think that, that term conversion is found all throughout the zoning ordinance. Just because it's used once in the condo conversion ordinance and deemed that one unit is exempt from a condo conversion permit or hotel conversion permit does not mean that that same use of that term is applied throughout the rest of the ordinance. We look to the definition for each chapter, for each ordinance, that we're looking to see if it applies to a project. So here, we would argue that the non-residential growth management program does apply to the project, even if it's one unit. It doesn't matter. It's the, it involves the conversion of exist, existing residential floor area to non-residential use. And we do have this in our handouts. I could show it to you if you want to get into more detail about how we try to explain that to applicants.
Great. Thank you for that. Okay, uh, Ms. Maria.
Well, that was my question too, because Mr. Liebman seemed so authoritative. And then Mr. Roushawn came up and said, well, wait a minute, look at the paragraph below it. Could I ask Mr. Vincent to give us an opinion on that?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'll be happy to break the tie. Um, what Ms. Brooke, what Ms. Brooke said about the condo conversion ordinance or the conversion ordinance to condominiums or hotels is absolutely correct. What Mr. Liebman focused, and he wanted to hyper-focus you on the word "shall," mandatory language you're familiar with, how it directs you to do something. Another thing that we lawyers do when we look at the language of ordinances is we look at all the language of the ordinances. So when it talks about when a permit is required, this is Section 2888028. Permit required. No person, firm, corporation, partnership, or other entity shall convert existing dwelling units, plural, to condominium, hotel, or similar use without having first said conversion approved by the planning commission. So you have plural. That fits in with the exception that he pointed you to and said, there's this exception. This application falls in that exception. Ms. Brooke said that it did. I agree. What Mr. Roushawn pointed out was really important though. Again, we look at all of the language, not only of this ordinance, not only of this chapter, but also the whole municipal code, particularly the rest of the zoning ordinance. So what Mr. Roushawn pointed out was the last sentence of exception B, the exception for one unit. No exception under this subsection shall affect the applicability of the zoning ordinance, the California Building Code, or any or other applicable ordinances or regulations. This brings us to the point that, that, um, Councilmember Dominguez was making regarding the growth management ordinance, Chapter 2885. It's a separate part of the zoning ordinance. The exception under subsection B to 2888028 for one unit says that if you are, it is exempt from the provisions of this chapter. That's Chapter 2888. So we're talking about two different things. The 2885, the growth management ordinance, says that, this is Section 2885030 subsection C, all non-residential construction projects require approval of a development plan. The definition of a non-residential construction project is found in 2885020 subsection J. A non-residential construction project is a project or portion thereof which consists of the construction of new residential floor area or the conversion of existing residential floor area to non-residential use. 2885010, no application for a land use permit for a non-residential construction project shall, uh, will be accepted or approved unless all of the new non-residential floor area within the project is allocated from one or more of the categories specified in this section. So this is a conversion of a residential use to a hotel. The hotel is a non-residential use. That is a non-residential construction project by definition. It requires a development plan. That is the action that was being taken by the HLC. The only findings that they were required to make were the findings for a development plan approval. Those are the findings that are before you on this application and those are the findings you need to make if you're going to approve the project. I hope that breaks the tie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Madam Mayor, I, I agree with Ms. Turunchuk that we're maybe not sending a clear message. And ever since we took up the issue of short-term rentals, there has been this question about how we're handling the R4 zone. And to me, this is a bigger question and it is raising, um, concerns about clarity to people out there. And so my second question then would be, how do we, how do we change that? Wouldn't, to, so that, what, what, I, I mean, Ms. Gott raises the question of 8,000 or so units in that zone. I don't think somebody wants to change all of them, but one by one, they could be purchased and turned into vacation rentals. And, you know, there was an article in the New York Times yesterday. I, I don't need the New York Times to tell me that we have a housing crisis in the city of Santa Barbara. So how, how would we change that? So that someone wouldn't latch on to that exemption, exemption of one unit?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the simple answer to that is that you would amend Chapter 2888 to apply either to all conversions or you would apply to, uh, you would change the rules so that they, uh, have different standards regarding short-term vacation rentals or short-term rentals distinguished from other residential uses. One of the, the issues that's raised here today is that there is no distinction between the conversion of one unit from a residential use to another permitted use. The, the distinctions are made once there, there are more than one use, there are more than one unit. Uh, the, the policy, there was a policy decision made regarding the conversion ordinance. In 19, in 2008, we amended the conversion ordinance. It was in response to a project on low, on, um, 109 North Lacumbra Road. And we dealt it with a number of issues, but one issue we did not remove from the ordinance or did, we did not change from the ordinance was this exception for one, a conversion of a single unit. And I think that there were a couple examples that I think are, you know, really paradigm examples that I've seen around town. Mr. Goran mentioned Don Sherry's architectural office. It was a single residence. It's now an architectural office. There's an example of a conversion of a single dwelling unit to, it was an adaptive reuse of an existing building. Uh, I can tell you that the, you, I don't need to tell you that there are general plan policies that are promotive of adaptive reuse of existing structures. There are also, as, I also don't need to remind you that there are, but I'm going to, uh, that there are plenty of housing policies that promote the preservation and the creation of housing units. What I, the specific, coming back to an answer to, uh, Councilmember Maria's question is, I suggest that this particular application is not the way you make the overarching policy. You have policies in place now, uh, the, and you can address those policies. And you have great discretion in your legislative actions to change your policies. But you have a land use decision before you that's talking about a particular application proposing on, on certain facts. Yes, you do have findings that have to be made, but those findings, the, the, the decision before you is on the facts before you and the policy is, is a bigger question than this particular action.
I, I think we do need to have a bigger discussion about how to preserve our housing stock. And I'm grateful for this opportunity to, um, to start that discussion. I wish the property owner would keep it as a long-term apartment, but I think what we're deciding is whether or not we, we can allow that. So I'll reserve the rest of my comments, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Revs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think the one thing we really do owe the community is consistency to the level possible, even though this is a rather arcane subject as all housing matters are. But it seems like we've been talking about almost everything but this particular project at this hearing today. When I talk about consistency, I think about all the people, many of whom are in this room, I've had in my office to explain to them why our code has said the single-family residence zones don't allow short-term rentals, even though we were inconsistent on the way we enforced those years ago. But one thing we also said was that they were allowed, there was allowable uses in certain zones. So I am struggling, number one, why this is teed up with us tonight as an HLC decision based on principles of sound community planning. I just don't, I don't know what that definition really is. And I sat through all those plans, Santa Barbara hearings and all the things that went on. I think that we haven't, um, been consistent in our communication. And this is one of those things where I really hope we don't sit up here and hold forth on the principles and our philosophies about housing. Those are worthy discussions, but that's not why we're here tonight. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. This is something we're deciding on one project based on the findings that were made by HLC. So I really don't know how we, we go forth, um, on this particular hearing without upholding the appeal or denying the appeal. Wait, which one are we doing?
You're voting.
Oh, see, they're being, they're upholding the appeal. That's what we're doing. I always hate that. But, um, the bigger, the bigger discussion, and I'm glad Mr. Vincent, I think, gave some, some, some good future counsel direction, is to try to retackle this problem and redefine it. And I know it's not going to be easy, um, but it is a, it is a hot-button subject. We need to preserve the community, but, but the same token is, we need to be very consistent on how we put this out and put this forward. So I will be upholding.
Right. So upholding means agreeing with the appellant, denying means agreeing...
No, I mean denying the appeal. Oh, wait, what am I doing? No, I'm going to let this guy do his thing.
You're going to allow for the conversion?
Yes.
So you'll uphold the appeal is what you're saying? If you wanted to deny the appeal, you will be agreeing with the HLC findings?
Thank you for looking over. I went hockster for a minute. I couldn't hold this.
Oh, okay. All right. So that's, that's where you're going with that. Okay. Uh, Mr. Dominguez.
This is, uh, more complicated than it needs to be because of this term, sound community planning. And this is in 2885.040. These are the standards for review. The four findings, the following findings shall be made prior to approving any development plan pursuant to this chapter. The proposed development is consistent with the principles of sound community planning. And what's, um, telling to me is this section didn't say general plan. Like some of our other finding sections say the proposed development is consistent with the general plan and principles of sound community planning. So this gives us more leeway. Sound community planning is a catch-all. It's, it's kind of like the basic speed law. There's the 55 mile per hour limit, but then there's a basic speed law in California where you can't drive faster than is safe. Same thing with, with DUI. There's the .08, but there's also you can't drive under the influence. There's these catchalls there to save us from hyper-technical arguments. So sound community planning to me is what's best for the community. That's what it boils down to. I heard a lot of talk about the housing shortage. Uh, Santa Barbara always has, since the two mash, who were the only sustainable inhabitants of our, of our area, we've always had a housing shortage. There have always been, there's always been a greater demand than there is supply. And I don't see that ever changing as long as we're not underwater. The difference is now we're in a housing crisis and that's defined as below a certain percentage of vacancy rate. If we were just in a housing shortage, I think community planning would dictate a different result. Here we are in a housing crisis. We cannot... We cannot provide housing for the employees who perform the basic services for the city. Teachers, police and fire, uh, workers in, in private sector restaurants, hotels, we are not able to house people who grew up in Santa Barbara and want to stay here. Okay? People are moving out of town and getting displaced, and unfortunately, our AUD is speeding up the displacement because we're demolishing under-market-priced housing to put in the highest-priced housing. So we're actually accelerating the dislocation of our poorest residents. So, it's, it's a little bit of a, of an anomaly this time we're in, and it truly is a crisis. The, uh, sound community planning leaves it open to the, to the council to determine what they want the community to look like. In this case, it comes down to this technical argument of whether the applicant can rent his unit out to someone for thirty days and longer, or thirty days and shorter. So, if we deny the appeal, he still gets to rent out his unit. We're not taking away his property rights. We just changed the terms of that lease in order to facilitate our housing and our economy. So that's the way I'm going to vote, to deny the appeal.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a, I'm, I'm grateful that we're having, that this hearing is finally here, and that we're, we are, uh, gathered to, to try and hash out the, the, how these one-unit proposals are coming forward, because I appreciate that the entrepreneurs here and the private property advocates here, the, the private advocates here put up, spend a lot of money and time and anxiety to get through this process. And I do, uh, I, I agree that the city sent out a mixed message, what, twelve years ago or some kind of number like that, when, when, uh, business licenses were issued and TOT started getting collected, uh, and, uh, in a, for a use that was illegal, that where thirty, rentals less, residential rentals less than thirty days, uh, are illegal in, in most places. So that was a mistake that the city made that sort of started this, and, and we hear, you know, and you, over and over again, "I got my business license. I paid my taxes. I'm, I'm performing as, as requested." And yet that was, that request was for an illegal action. And I don't think that's, that just didn't start us on a good path on this, then this avalanche that came of short-term rentals. Obviously, that's, it's the sharing economy that hit, that we've, we're seeing with Uber, we're seeing with, uh, Amazon. I mean, just that these, this is another paradigm shift that's, that's occurring, and the, this business license and, uh, bed tax situation got us, uh, headed speedily, and, and Ms. Gott quoted some numbers about how fast the, the, the numbers of units and the numbers of dollars, uh, accumulated. So now here we are trying to, to make sense of it on a, on a one project, this project today, and I appreciate the point this may, we're not going to do the whole land use planning thing today, but we are looking at this single project. So I want to share with you a bit my policy base on, on this. As, as one of the students of, of planning here and, and experienced in, in, on both sides of the, of the proverbial dais, uh, at least this might help you understand how I, how I approach this one and how I will be approaching the others as well. It is a discretionary act, and it's one that I see, just, there are a range of discretionary permits that are available for, which you can apply for, which we can apply for, but which can't, which the answer can be either yes or no, depending on the, on the, the conditions, the whole specific set of circumstances. And for me, the short-term rental window is a very small one. And I'll give you, um, it just, we, uh, an instance where I could support it would be, for example, if I, if there are two hotels, uh, down there in the, in the, somewhere between the Bird Refuge and the Harbor, in that area, there are two hotels, and there's a cottage in between. And those situations do exist. I'll give that very strong consideration to be converted to a short-term rental. It's, there's, there's the area where, uh, that sort of thing is occurring. The R-four goes all the way up to Cottage Hospital, one of our key areas where demand screams, uh, greater than supply. We are really, where people do not have a, the people that need to work there do not have a place to, to live nearby. So the R-four is right there. So you could, that all could become candidates for short-term rentals. I can't support those being converted. So, um, that will give you a sense of where I'm going with this, where I, at least where I am right now. I'm going to continue to keep my ears open. I appreciate the, that this is still a, a process moving, uh, fast. But I appreciate, Mr. Vincent went over, uh, the, the points about, uh, our ability here to retain our discretionary powers, that we can say no here legally. Our, our attorney gives us that, uh, opinion. And, uh, so I will be for, and, and it is, the, the housing crisis is, is upon us, and, uh, every unit counts, and, uh, I will be doing this one unit at a time. I'll only be able to approve very few short-term rentals, and the findings would be around what's immediately next door, and, uh... So that's, that's the basis on which I will be making my decisions in the future, and today I will be, uh, supporting the, I will be denying the appeal.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is not about short-term rentals at all. This is about, uh, HLC trying to do their job but overextending their authority, I think. We have a principle, they have just slammed the door on anybody who wants to convert in a zone where the city council has clearly said, "Go for it, even though it's a difficult process. We invite you to do it." We've even asked community development to try to streamline the process so that if somebody, particularly in a R-four, wants to convert, they have an easier time. Now, we know full well they're not having an easy time, but as a council, it's our job, not HLC's, to set the policy. And that's the policy. If you are in the right zone, you may try. And now HLC has said, "If you are in the right zone, don't bother." That is absolutely wrong. We should not do anything but uphold this appeal in, in, um, recognition of what we have asked these people here to do for two years, and they spent a lot of money. I don't see how my colleagues can say to them, or to anyone else, "Don't bother to try to do what we said you could do." Mr. Rouse is damn right when he says you can't change the rules in the middle of the game, and that's what we're doing here. Don't do it. I hope my colleagues will reconsider. I will absolutely uphold the appeal. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Hart?
Well, I, I think everybody has made a good point, good points, and where I kind of am trying to focus is on the difficulty the city had over time in developing mixed-use projects. You know, that was not a done deal back fifteen, twenty years ago. It took a lot of effort, took a lot of creativity, and, um, those projects, those residential projects and commercial zones are an asset to the city, and they were our hard-fought struggle. And the idea that we're just going to throw that away now and basically say all of these mixed-use projects now are not anything special, that the residential component of those projects that were hard-fought individually, project by project, are going to be thrown away in, in the effort to turn residential projects into commercial projects, is, I think that's a mistake. I think that that doesn't, um, respect the integrity of a very long planning process, much longer than this conversation about short-term rentals. The mixed-use conversation is something that's animated planning discussions for a very long time. And I think that thinking of it in those terms may give folks a different perspective on this, and I think that is the way we ought to think about this. So I would vote to, um, deny the appeal based on that.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I'm in, uh, agreement with Councilmember Hart to deny the appeal, um, and, and based on the fact that we have this process. So you can take a project to staff, staff-level design review board, and then there's the appeal process, and it comes to us, and we make a measured decision about whether this is a good thing to do in this particular location. And, and that, that said, we do need a more clear, broad policy than what we have to give, um, clear direction for people who are looking to, uh, do business in this city. This is a very uncomfortable decision. I, I really hear Ms. Turanchock and, and her client that they did, uh, went through a process, but looking, weighing all the factors, um, I, I have to deny the appeal, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
So thank you all for your comments, and for those who sent emails and couldn't make it before today, and, you know, recognizing this is one of several, actually, that will be coming to us on a number of appeals, but my comments will be based on, on this one. I, I will say, bigger picture to begin with, that the city does need to do a better job in clarifying things, and I don't think that's, uh, I think everyone knows that, uh, people from both sides of this, of this debate have said that for their own reasons. And so, you know, that is, that part is clear, that we need more clarification. I think one of, some of the things just came out of this particular appeal, and some of those things to look forward and into future discussions have to do with design review boards looking at development plans versus the show that can be appealed to planning commission and keep it streamlined that way. That might be something to look at. And, and I, and I've said before on, on issues related to short-term vacation rentals, I've always also been an advocate for home sharing, which might solve some of the bigger issues related to some of the debate. That's not what we're talking about here, but I figured it was, um, kind of brought up in terms of the big, big, uh, policy concerns about vacation rentals. That's still a component, I think, that could help clarify some things. The thing that, the, the issue that comes down to me, people are saying, um, going through a process as though if you go through the process, there's a guarantee of a specific result. And that's not what discretionary processes are about. That's why the term discretionary is there. That's why we're having a tough time up here, and that's why there are different opinions up here, even though we're all saying we're going through the process. So, um, I, I want to say upfront that Mr. Catania did absolutely everything he was asked to do. He was under the impression, because of the, what the city had done, of saying, "Come to get, do a business license, pay your TOT." He did that. When, when we changed our, uh, when we, when we said we are going to look in enforcement of what's currently on the books, then he came forward and said, "Okay, I'll go through what the discretionary process is." So, I want to, you know, um, thank him for doing that, and not, knowing that it's, uh, not a easy process, but it was necessary, and he did everything that was asked of him. Then it went through this development review process, of which there was a discretionary, uh, opinion made by Historic Landmarks Commission, which was in the code of that was the way to go, and they could not make the findings. That was perfectly within their right to do so. And now it comes back to us about what works. And I think, um, a lot of what my colleague said about the bigger picture, about location, about a lot of the issues here and there, um, this particular issue may be different from another one that's going to come to us in another couple of weeks. So, but I am convinced by the mixed-use project, mixed-use arguments, by issues related to the housing crisis, issues related to, um, what Mr. Dominguez said, is that we're not denying the use of the area to be rented out, we're just saying it has to be for thirty or more days. So, um, you know, it, like I said, it, we do need to clarify things better. We probably should have something more clearly defined as short-term vacation rental ordinances that will distinguish that from other, you, other uses that could be in the, um, nonresidential growth management plan, because there is a distinction between a doctor's office, an architectural firm, things that are, need to have the regular, uh, works of the city function, and this issue about vacation rentals. It is a separate type of thing, and we haven't had that conversation. So I think the HLC did what was in their purview to do. I do think it probably should go through the show or the planning commission, just in terms of planning issues, but that's a discussion for another day. But for what was on the books, they, um, they did what was asked of them and what was on, in the code. And, uh, so I will be voting to deny the appeal. So with that, we need a motion. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the council uphold the Historic Landmarks denial of the short-term rental at one oh-one West Annapurne Street, and, uh, direct staff to return to council with the decision and findings resolution reflecting, uh, that decision.
Sir, second?
Second.
Second by Dominguez. Mr. Rouse?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, you know, I, I think this is a really unfortunate discussion because we've dragged in a bigger policy issue into a single hearing, and we've basically said to those applicants out there, "Trying to do it the right way, abandon all hope ye who enter here." And I, I, I am very disappointed in the outcome of this. How we get to clarity on this process now, I think, just got muddied even further. So it's, uh, it's, it's unfortunate. I, yeah, I won't be supporting the motion.
Okay. Mr. Dominguez?
In light of, uh, litigation threats, I just want to make sure the record's clear, at least from my perspective. I am only voting on this project. This has nothing to do with a greater policy or precedence. It's just based on the facts related to this site's specific location.
Thank you. Well said. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
So it's, uh, approved five-two with Rouse and Hotchkiss opposed. So thank you, and, okay. We do have some council member committee assignment reports. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Madam Mayor, I went to the ribbon-cutting at Hind Hall at the Music Academy of the West. They've completed their, I mean, that's a really remarkable campus, not strictly in the city of Santa Barbara, but we have all the benefits of it, from two-hundred performances, many of them, um, free, and, um, most of them within the city limits, and, uh, just a, a great jewel to have a part of the city, in a sense.
Thank you. Ms. Mario? I'm sorry, could you please take your, um, conversations outside, please? Thank you. Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Rescue Mission graduation ceremony, and that's people who went through a rigorous, months-long sobriety program with Rescue Mission, and it was very fulfilling to be there and support them and congratulate them on their achievement. The Neighborhood Advisory Council met last week where our parks director presented about the Cabrillo Arts Pavilion, the Cabrillo Bath House renovation project, and we were all satisfied to see it would be a great amenity to the East Side residents who can walk there from their neighborhood. The South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety focused on mental health services for students and teens at risk to be in, uh, gang activity and other kinds of trouble, and that's a great, uh, program that keeps going, and I'm glad, uh, we're going a level deeper now that we're not having, uh, gang crime in the streets. We're actually looking at the root causes of when young people make bad choices. And finally, the PATH Neighborhood Partnership Meeting, and maybe Councilmember Dominguez wants to chime in, formerly the Milpus Action Task Force. We just continue to look at issues related to the PATH Shelter in the Lower East Side. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Dominguez?
Ms. Mario just covered what I was going to say. Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank, um, a number of, um, staff in Mr. Casey's office. Last Friday, we had, we hosted the League of California Cities Channel Counties Division Quarterly Dinner, and Nicole Grisanti in particular, but Holly Piera and others were very much involved in making it, um, a great success. And there were over a hundred people from the tri-counties at the dinner, and it's just a, and also, um, the new executive director, Carolyn Coleman, was able to meet with us, and I got to show her around Santa Barbara a little bit and show her some city-related projects, uh, so that was some really quality time with her, but, uh, really just want to thank the staff for doing all the work that they did above and beyond, so. Okay, and we don't have any closed session, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much.